Alright. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Board of Education, Yellow Springs School District. I appreciate everybody being here. We're trying at a different time and really importantly, trying to hear from teachers and staff today, so thanks for being here. Eric Vios?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Cansley?
Here.
Here Turner?
Here.
We have Oram. Alright, so thanks to everybody here, everybody who will be watching online later, we're not live streaming this. There is a signup sheet for the community comment section if you want to make sure you put your name down. Leslie, you'll pull it. We only have a half hour block that we'll use for community comments, so if it goes past that, we'll stop it. That wasn't intended for staff to sign up, that's our teachers, that was for...
I just wanted to say Amy, I'm going to say something, since she's not here.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, Amy Magnus, our school board member, is not here today, wanted me to just express, she had a family member of the guys, and their funeral was today, it's out of state, so she wanted to let staff know she was sorry she wasn't here to hear their comments, that she intends to listen to the meeting later, and she said if you have any specific questions for her, that please share them, and that she would get back to you on it.
Okay, so moving on to section two, Dr. Wolda, I mean, just to switch 2.2 and 2.1?
Well, we're gonna switch 2.1 to 2.3, and 2.2 and 2.1, 2.3 will move up.
Gotcha.
So this is 2.3.
Perfect. Alright, so we'll do staff input, community comments, then we'll go into discussion. Alright, so let's, what's that? Staff input?
So, yeah, staff that wants to give their input, I know that you may have signed up in the community comments paper, but this is your section to give your input, so staff members that want to give their input, I guess feel free to go ahead and get started, and we'll just record while.
Alright, I'm gonna start first. Thank you, Yellow Springs School Board. My name's Eli Hurwitz, I'm the president of the Yellow Springs Education Association, I'm a resident of Yellow Springs, I'm married to a graduate, and the father of two graduates at Yellow Springs Schools. Teachers of Yellow Springs Schools have been asked again to speak to the school board about their facility needs. While this particular task takes place during our workday, since it deals with our facility needs to provide for the educational needs of our students, it makes sense for us to have this conversation, but there's still some trepidation about speaking. I'm gonna speak for some teachers who are uncomfortable, so I'm gonna be speaking for a little bit of time, so bear with me. There are other groups of teachers that are gonna speak for groups, individuals that'll speak for groups of teachers as well. Alright, so I'm speaking for both myself and members that either are unable, uncomfortable, or would rather just have me do it. In my education philosophy class, I had to know Maslow's hierarchy of needs. I will use that as a jumping off point for what I'm going to share with you. Most conversations about our facilities start with the base physiological needs of our staff and students. That said, bathrooms. At the high schools, this has been repeated ad nauseam, and I hope it is understood that students traveling three stories to get to a bathroom, or teachers from the second and third floors being forced to queue up for an unventilated single stall in between classes definitely does not meet that basic need. I'm gonna put the HVAC system within this most basic level of needs because that basic control over the environment in the high school classrooms does not exist. Classroom temperatures range from 60 degrees when it isn't very cold outside to 85 degrees even when it isn't hot outside. Even these lowest hanging fruits are nothing compared to having students barely able to get into classrooms, as is the case with our ability to safely get students that are differently abled into our chemistry room, just as an example. Above physiology is safety. I'm gonna stick with bathrooms for a moment longer here. Our non-binary bathrooms are even farther away from the third floor than they are, as they are in McKinney Building. But safety is so much more than that. In the words of one of my members, that represents the words of many more, "I currently do not feel safe in our building. I want the board to consider the world we live in outside of Yellow Springs, because we are a blue island in a red sea. The prospect of becoming a target is something we cannot ignore, and currently, this building in its current state would not keep our students and staff safe, were something catastrophic to happen." Still, that does not cover all of this level of Maslow. We need facilities that work for the modern increase in students with trauma, or sensory overload and anxiety. These students need safe places to move, to find quiet, and to have a basic space to do their work. Not only do our students with sensory needs have issues with sound, all of our students and teachers deserve spaces that do not have sound distractions. Limited classroom space and flexibility pushes students to work in hallways that distract other classes and other hallway work rooms. Cafeteria and gym acoustics are terrible and make information delivery extremely challenging. Our classroom acoustics are bad. Students taking tests are frequently distracted by sounds from nearby classrooms that wouldn't normally transmit between rooms if the dividers weren't fiberboard, glass, or other thin insulated, uninsulated materials, but instead of normal, instead if they were made of, it wouldn't, if they were made of normal construction materials. And still, basic safety, fire safety in the kiln room at the high school, good ventilation for our darkroom and clay labs, we need a space for bats, regular wasp flights, and we need facilities without the ever-present fear that mold, though not the deadly black mold, still cause allergic responses and contribute to absences. The mold, not the deadly black mold, is still black and could be something I should worry about, so anxiety. This is before the next two levels of Maslow, love and belonging and esteem. Spaces that allow teachers to interact with students using modern education pedagogies and technology. We are no longer just providing pencils and paper. We need outlets for technology that does not lead to a maze of cables and plentiful tripping hazards as we navigate our rooms. We need designated space for teachers to be able to meet together and do things as simple as eat lunch together, and build a culture of peers as opposed to a disparate group of adults that do not have an opportunity to communicate other than at the occasional meetings. We need designated space for small group testing. We needed to use the elevator room this last week because they needed one-on-one, a student needed one-on-one testing, which conflicts with students that physically need to use the elevator but can't be in the testing area. 504 and IEP students that need small group testing do not have access to an appropriate testing space. We need space for small group instruction to teach students that need intervention, that need intervention support, that is not just the back of the room reading to them quietly. We need rooms situated so that our intervention rooms are situated near the rooms they are supporting. We need spaces to store materials and to store them safely. We need furniture that fits our students. We need furniture that does not constantly make noises. We need furniture that allows for multiple methods of rearranging, reconfiguring, and use. We need technology that would allow teachers' movement during instruction and facilitation rather than being tethered to a specific wired spot in the room. We need spaces to share work and build self-esteem from what is, from that kind of celebration of the learning process. As an example, we would benefit from folding whiteboard walls that can create movable small workspaces and displaced spaces. Our library needs movable shelving to allow for creating a variety of working spaces. It needs to be a place that is not a hallway, so learning can take place there without the interruption of other classes' movement, or so that learning can take place there without interrupting the other classes' learning in their classrooms connected to it. We need spaces for modern media creation, recording both video and audio. We need spaces for creation of physical media that does not involve walking to a separate building. We need an easy way to provide subject acceleration to allow it to happen smoothly, as we have students starting to accelerate at younger and younger grades, so we can service our gifted kids. And we need more communication between teachers for vertical alignment, kindergarten through 12th grade. We need appropriately sized and safe art, general music, instrumental music, choir, and theater spaces to provide for arts instruction, learning, and performing. And once we get some of these physical vestiges of Maslow's hierarchy met, we are closer to a space where we can see some self-actualization in our students. Alright, and then I was given a very specific list of things that would really benefit any of our art rooms. Central air, quiet heat that can be used during class ventilation appropriate for an art room, windows that can be opened and also blocked when using presentation systems with a viewscape appropriate for teaching art concepts and inspiration, good lighting, safe access to outdoors without worry of frozen roof runoff, handrails elevated that is safe to use away from dumpsters, appropriate sinks for an art room accessible for both short and tall students with space for more than one student at a time, ideally four, furniture to comfortably seat short and tall students, sturdy tables that can be cleaned easily and don't wobble when students erase things, smart board presentation systems with the capability to relay accurate color and value, lights and darks of examples and demonstrations, display area outside the art room, doors on supply shelving that could slide open and be used for display or to minimize sensory overload of open shelving and discourage students from accessing supplies not being used, easy-to-clean floors like the current floor, neutral walls with display areas, space for flexibility to allow for centers, discussion, critiquing, tech centers, art books to read, separate kiln area within view of the classroom requiring special ventilation outdoors, and ample outlets. So those are many teachers' comments all rolled up into one, and there are other teachers that had other things that they wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli.
So I'm Ashley Fulbrich, I cur- Okay. My name is Ashley Fulbrich, and I am a fifth grade teacher. I'm here to speak about some of the concerns our teachers in 3 through 6 have discussed. Our students need a space with proper ventilation and temperature control. Our rooms have window AC units which generate a lot of dust and smells. These units are outdated and do not adequately cool our spaces. Our students in some classrooms wear coats in the winter, in other rooms the windows are open because of the constant heat. The windows in the rooms are not energy efficient. The windows in the K3 section do not have screens which allow bugs and birds into our classroom. Mills Lawn currently has over a dozen unsafe entry points. These entry points pose a security risk, and we have fifth and sixth grade students leaving our building to access their band class. Many of our spaces lack appropriate flooring. For example, the clinic at Mills Lawn has carpet. All of the flooring should be able to be cleaned and disinfected regularly. We also, our students also require good air quality when it comes to what is being pumped out of the furnace. We also have heard, our students and staff have also talked about the smell of regular gas that is from outside and inside our building.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Hi, I'm Lori Sparrow-Napp. I'm a lifetime theater and business professional, graduate of a professional theater training program. I'm a CTE licensed educator in arts and communication, and I am currently the theater director and co-head of the high school in McKinney, five time state, and two-time Miami Valley High School Theater Award-winning theater curricula. I am the artistic director of the Yellow Springs Theater. I am also a former professional equity actor and a professional theater producer tasked with maintaining and improving facilities for a 1,200-seat amphitheater. I am also, most recently, an Ohio Kennedy Center Collaborative Education Teaching Artist, teaching inclusion of theater across core curriculum classrooms and theater SEL practices to enhance and support teaching practices in K through 12 classrooms. I'm also a former parent, Luke Sanson, class 2020. I feel it's important to give my credentials before this group today because I speak as one of your arts educators, the educators of your village children, and I'm here to talk about educational needs which would benefit our arts pedagogies and our students. So here are some things that would help. Acoustically sound spaces for choral and instrumental work. These can be classrooms. They must have adequate room for both riser and band setups for over 30 to 40 people. All spaces should be ADA compliant, so that all students with disabilities who wish to participate can access the room. This is not the case right now. If you are in a chair, you cannot take music. Climate control of classrooms for both music and theater which also have adequate ventilation and access to fresh air, or air, or access to fresh air to cut down any viral safety risks. We need windows that are high up and safe, and that can open so that we can air out rooms, because singing is still, as we learned with cancellation, monemia, kind of a thing. By the way, come see if it's Wednesday, Friday. Here we go. Dedicated storage spaces for instruments and for theater equipment. These also must be climate controlled to protect instruments and electronics. This room should also be secure. We should not be keeping vital materials in things that cannot be completely secure with the devil. Choral risers to stand 40 to 50 people. A theater classroom large enough to allow 30 people to sit and move around comfortably. This space could potentially double as rehearsal space by the extracurricular, because we do not have a dedicated space at this time. This should be a large and acoustically sound room with closet storage for an upright piano, and other storage space for film, microphone equipment used for making theater, and for our burgeoning film program. A mirrored wall would be nice in that classroom for movement, as well as a movement dance-ready floor, so children are not dancing on concrete. This space should have adequate 21st century tools of performance production, oh, sorry, it's got something here. Ah-ha, big one. An auditorium, theater space for school assemblies, graduations, choir and band concerts, and theater productions. This space should be at least able to sit student bodying and teachers comfortably, and should be climate controlled. It should also have adequate 21st century tools of performance production, including a sound system and a soundboard with a built-in monitor and headphone systems and booth, as well as lighting instruments with safe access to adding and configuring lights, and a light board on a grid. Its backstage area should contain storage and access to a loading door for safe load-in and load-out of all sets and equipment into space. We need gender-appropriate dressing room spaces with lights, counters, mirrors, and bathrooms, display and lobby spaces which can also be used to display student work, a ventilated attached climate control maker shop space with built-in dust collection and dedicated organized storage brackets for project lumber, an internal maker space to teach softwood sewing, costuming, props making, and other school-making needs across the curriculum, also climate controlled with storage. In support of this space, we would like one-to-one sewing machines for our students. Currently, my sewing machines are five-to-one. It takes a long time to do a sewing project. We would also like sewing forms, irons, and ironing boards. We would also like two standard film cameras for work and student projects, as well as板boards, microphones, and monitors used in teaching and making film and broadcast news. A recording space for student audio work. This room should be acoustically designed to minimize outside sound for recording of podcasts, student radio, or voiceover work. A student kitchen, and this is a little outside my realm and getting to something I hear from the students, so I'm gonna put it out there on behalf of them, a student kitchen lab for the opportunity of teaching cooking and food preparation with a stove, refrigerator, and stuff with basic cooking implements. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak today. Thank you for your service. This morning when I came to speak, a teacher said to me, "I think this is the 20th time that I have been asked what we need," and I really appreciate you giving us this 21st, so that we can, we can make an impact.
Hi, I'm Kenetta Samberg. I teach here at Mills Lawn. So we have a few different grade levels I hear that have mentioned these items, and kind of mixed them up between us, but we talked about more integrated spaces to share district resources, like shared staff and shared spaces. Enough space, enough classrooms, enough meeting spaces for all teachers, including special education teachers, related services like speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, et cetera. Testing for, space for testing for students who require separate settings. So currently, testing small groups, that's happening in the teacher's lounge, so that gets a little awkward, we're trying to go to lunch. Small group spaces for independent student work with supervision, so right now if we're doing small group work, it kind of has to happen in the classroom, so if there's a student in a small group that, talking with that group, and maybe someone needs a quieter space, they're either going out in the hallway, which they're not supervised clearly if I'm not by the door, or they just have to find another space in the classroom, which is tough. And then sensory rooms and spaces. We have a sensory path in our hallway that's not always easy to use, especially during transition times. In addition to that, self-contained library space, so again, if we have, we need small group space, one of the things that's going on is, okay, we have a library, but classes are happening in there, and then, so we can hear the library, and then the library can hear us, so it kind of gets muddled. Dedicated eating space and dedicated gym space, so we're in the gym right now. If, I think, yeah, at this time, lunch would be happening, so gym class can't happen. Places to display student work. Our students are doing excellent work. It is hard to find places to put it up. Space for traffic to move in both directions in the halls. I've run into some of these traffic jams. It is not easy to move throughout the halls, because the halls are so narrow. Performance spaces with sound system and lighting. Adequate storage spaces in closets, uniformly complied to ADA standards. Accessibility indoors and outdoors, this is a major issue. If kids are trying to come in and out of my own classroom from the back, there's no ramp, there's a step up, and while most of us who are able-bodied can make that step, not everyone can, and I don't think we think about that when it comes to kids, most of the time. We assume that they are able-bodied. And then updated roofing and ceilings. I think we can look up and see that.
Hello, my name is Naomi Hyatt. I'm an intervention specialist, coach, community member, and parent in the district, and I'm gonna be speaking on behalf of the special education department at the high school. I'm nervous, so if my voice breaks, or if I start to cry, it's because this is my multiple time here in a, in a conversation process. The teachers are asked to speak, the teachers are then told that we are asking for a pipe dream wishlist, so I'm nervous. I wanna start by saying what we don't have, so that as I go forward to what we need, you have some context for what we're experiencing. I wanna, again, begin by saying that it speaks volumes to the special education department that the original plan did not include classrooms, pull-out spaces, or offices for any special education services. These are our students with the greatest need, and it seems like they are tremendously overlooked. I put, I gave a resource to President Turner, a document that talks about how to implement considerations for students with special needs into the design process when thinking about designing schools. Special education currently does not have designated spaces that allow for small group work and testing. We're seeing a huge influx in special education qualifications and 504 accommodation, or qualifications. These students have accommodations that allow for small group testing, refocusing breaks, and other services that require designated space. We do not have the space to accommodate their needs. Just this week, as Eli spoke to before, one of my students taking an end-of-course exam that is required to meet his graduation needs, and it requires one-on-one testing, took his test at the elevator landing, which is just not ideal. It's really not great. The building in general, as I think you know from your tours of the facilities, lacks appropriate weatherproofing, ventilation, and temperature regulation, and is not secure from pests, animals, or inside or outside threats. When it rains, it pours, literally, from the ceilings and leaky windows. Ask yourself, community members, board members, do you have leaks where rain comes into your home? And if you did, wouldn't you do something permanent to fix it? This is my third year in the middle school, high school building, and no substantive change has been made. It feels like a Band-Aid on a bullet wound to continue to patch the roof or patch these problems. When we talk about temperatures, I've heard community members state that air conditioning is a wishlist from teachers. While of course, we all want to be comfortable, this is an issue of creating effective learning environments. In a classroom that I co-teach in on the second floor, I have measured temperatures under 52 degrees and over 86 degrees. With 25-plus students in a classroom, there is no effective way to learn with those temperatures. The lack of moisture control in combination with the lack of ventilation leads to mold, again, not the scary black mold, but mold nonetheless. One teacher from our department shares that they have a systemic immune response, allergic reaction to their own classroom. Mold tests have been positive in their classroom, and they have to bleach all surfaces daily to try to control new mold growth. I have seen bats, rats, snakes, wasps, and endless stink bugs in the building. Any remediation efforts are a moot point, because the building is not effectively sealed to keep them out. The building is not as safe as it should be from internal or external threats. Recent additional supports are helpful, but when you have walls made of glass, or some doors that didn't get the sliding bolt, it's ineffective. Not all of our classrooms or spaces are ADA compliant, as others have mentioned, making it not accessible for all students. I'll now move to what we need, now that you understand what we're missing. We need quiet, accessible spaces for our service providers, including speech, occupational therapy, mental health services, and physical therapy. Those spaces also need to allow for privacy. We also need accessible classrooms for all, that are all ADA compliant, with equipment that supports movement around the classroom for students with disabilities, with attention to physical access, lighting, confidentiality, and noise control. I encourage you to review the document I provided with special attention to the section about student dignity as it's related to school design. Intervention specialists should each have their own classroom space with the capacity to seat their entire caseload. We should not have to rock, paper, scissors for the use of a space for our struggling students. We should not have to move our services to hallways, elevator landing spaces, or copy rooms, all places I have used in the last two weeks. We need sensory rooms or designated spaces for students to take refocusing breaks. Students currently take their refocusing breaks by roaming the halls. Accommodations in their IEPs state that they have access to these breaks. We should provide a safe place for them to have those breaks. We need a clean and healthy facility that meets the modern standard of safety, air filtration, and temperature control. We know, and our students know, what the standard is. We see it being offered to students and teachers in all of our surrounding schools. As I travel with my athletes, they see other schools, and they wonder why we can't have the basic things that these other schools have. Our deficits are becoming glaringly obvious. Our school pride, student buy-in, and staff buy-in are going down as we continue to fail to make effective change that would benefit our school. Thank you.
Okay, that's, hopefully you can hear me. So thank you for listening to us today and inviting us to speak. My name's Brandon Lowry, and I am the chemistry, physics, AP Chemistry and AP Physics teacher at the high school, so those are the advanced versions of the two sciences that move up into college level. I'm a second career teacher. Prior to this, I was a health inspector for the Greene County Health Department, where I also believe- where I also lead school building inspections. So I taught in one other school district, and I've also seen almost every school building in Great County, which is quite a few. So I'll kind of focus mainly on safety issues, because that's what I'm most greatly concerned about, and it is a daily concern. But just to give you some comparison of where I feel we are compared to what else I've seen and where else I've taught, my classroom is incredibly small. I taught in a very low-income rural district, not too different from the size of Yellow Springs. My room was over twice the size of what I have right now. I've seen most of the school science rooms in County. My room is incredibly small. And just to compare, like curriculum-wise, we're a small school, and we do a great job with a lot of course offerings. That's a strength for our students and something that we need to keep. However, it puts us in a different situation. I am the chemistry and physics teacher, as I said. I have a room that's smaller than the usual chemistry room and smaller than the usual physics room, and I have materials for both course content combined into those rooms. I'm having an issue. I have 23 desks that I can fit in my room when they're absolutely jam-packed. I frequently have close to 30 students. I have really high AP enrollment, I frequently have AP classes of 27 kids. That puts at least four kids at lab benches. At other schools, teachers frequently have two preps, they teach two classes. I frequently have three preps. So that means I've got possibly three different lab activities going on in a day. So I may have incoming students sitting at a lab bench where there was a previous lab. They've not been prepped on safety concerns for that, and we haven't had time to ship those materials. So they're coming in to sit in a lab area and class in a relaxed environment where there's materials that I very quickly have to ship that can be quite hazardous. I do a lot of work to minimize those, but they are a requirement to teach chemistry, much like sports equipment is required to have a sports program. Just to kind of go through like some of those safety issues that I've gone through. And again, this is not just good teaching, but I have so many desks in my room that when we do a lab, which are frequent, we have a lot of issues that are hazardous. For one, you put that many desks into a room, it makes the eye wash and shower stations very hard to access. And that, that's a real concern. We get one acid splash in somebody's eye, then they're going to have a harder time getting back to flush that out. That is a health concern. It also introduces a lot of clutter. When we're disposing of waste at the end of labs, it's hard to get across the classroom. When you are moving across the classroom, you're moving across groups of students that may have finished up their stuff or taken off their safety equipment. That means you're moving dangerous chemicals and your kids that are unprotected. When we do have labs, like physics labs as opposed to chemistry labs, there's not enough room in my classroom to perform those. And there may also be chemistry equipment that's set up from previous classes. So we move out into the hallways. That means I've got groups of students both in my classroom and outside of the classroom that I'm continuously trying to monitor. So there are times when I do not see the students that I am teaching. They are at one end of the hallway or the other, and I'm having to circulate through. When students have questions, that pauses the, that time when I circulate and can see them. And that means we have students that are unobserved in a lab activity, which is a safety risk. I have, as I said before, a tremendous amount of supplies that are required to teach my content. There is no sufficient storage for that. We have head fire department, ask that they not be stored up above the ceiling because they're combustibles. We have stuff piled in. I've been asked to clean up my stuff. And that is sometimes almost an insulting ask when there's no spot to put it, there's no room to put it, and there's no time to transition between that. I've had students in wheelchairs. My room is incredibly claustrophobic. When you come in, it's hard to even get them situated in the classroom and to get them to be able to enter my room. Those are just some of the things. Like I said, I'm primarily concerned with safety. There's a whole lot of pedagogical needs that are in there as well. I think you've heard some of those as well, but thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Skibon, and I'm a first-grade teacher. I'm a little bit nervous. So I'm going to be talking on behalf of a lot of the teachers at Mills Lawn about the hygienic and personal needs of our students and our staff. So right now, I would say one of our needs would be sinks in our classrooms. That's a personal health need, a hygienic need for our students. We also need adequate number of student toilets. Right now, we have, there are six stalls in the primary hallway that's supposed to be shared across seven classrooms. Four of those are in the girls' restroom and two in the boys'. There are a lot of urinals in the boys' restroom, which doesn't really meet the personal needs of a lot of our students. They may not feel comfortable, so we need stalled restrooms and an adequate number of those. We also need an adequate number of staff restrooms. There's often times when you just cannot, you can't go to the restroom. There's, you know, little time between, between activities and during our plan and lunchtime, and there's, there's two, there's two places unless you go across the building. And then there's just only two there as well, so we need more of those. We also need a separate eating and restroom space for staff. It's quite uncomfortable to use the restroom right next to the place that staff members are supposed to have their lunch. The walls are really thin, so it creates an awkward and not hygienic environment for either, either person. And then lastly, I believe that we need updated plumbing. We often have foul smells in the restrooms by the sinks, and it's, it's, it's a problem. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Deborah Maybro, a second-grade teacher. And again, as Jennifer outlined, some of the things that we've talked about, and I'm just kind of adding just some, again, some other items, just things that we need. Natural lighting. Currently, our lighting is too harsh for what we're trying to do. Also, even distribution of electrical outlets. We have to make choices of what we can plug in. And we don't want to be unsafe and have outlet, have cords. So again, even distribution of electrical outlets. Panels, electrical panels that support our electrical needs. Currently, if we, if there are two people trying to use the microwave in the staff, in the staff room, we have to turn the lights out. And because it won't, it'll blow a fuse, right? It's just, it's something that we deal with, but it should be, it should work better than that. And we need all classrooms to be in the building. All right, currently, because we have rooms out in the trailers, if kids have to go to the restroom, we have to give them a key to get back in. And that's, again, everyone should be, it should be in a circular motion so that everyone is, can stay safe and be connected. Age-appropriate, we also need age-appropriate playground equipment. We've got a great, smaller, for the smaller kids, equipment. But for the older kids, third grade and up, it's too big for them, all right? And so they may do, we may do. But if we want kids to play safely, we need to have age-appropriate equipment. And also too, talking about the playground, safety on the playground. That, and how this can happen to reinforce or to send a message to the community when it's school time, it's time for us to be safe and not have to worry about people that are walking through the playground, all right, with their dogs or what have you. And not that we're not welcoming to the community, but if it's, if it's time for kids, then let it be time for kids, all right? And let that other activity be after school hours. And, and also too, our kindergarten, right now, the patio that's off the kindergarten, kindergarten road, it floods, it floods. There's the, is an unlevel surface. It's, it's, it's just not age-appropriate. So there are just things that we need, all right, so to help us to have our kids safe and, and know that we are doing our best to provide what they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Sarah Emine, the field teacher support specialist at Mills Lawn. And I'm here speaking on behalf of concerns from Mills Lawn School. We have two buildings advocating for their own needs with very limited resources. The most important resource that we both need are human resources. We have district employees who have to go between two buildings. Their time is divided, and yet at Mills Lawn, we often feel that having access to them or their ability to be involved in the events or scheduling at both buildings is lacking due to the separation of space and due to their offices being housed at the high school. Staying fully engaged in two buildings with different needs is taxing and difficult to sustain, especially when there's no space for them here at Mills Lawn. Every district employee when he comes has to work in our paper storage room. We need a better way for our shared staff members to be equally, to be able to equally meet the needs of both buildings in a much more effective, inclusive, and supportive way. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Day. I'm a teacher at the high school since 1993, which I was just realizing is halfway back to when the high school was created. And I'm going to take a little bit of a historical perspective here. As a teacher, I've been in the same Yellow Springs High School classroom for 30 years. I know it well, and I've learned how to make it work. When my room is too cold in winter, I know the secret of where to reach into my 60-year-old radiator to turn on the hot water or plug in the blower. When I have students on the west side of my classroom where there are no electrical outlets, I know how to safely stretch the extension cord so everyone can keep their computer running. I can tell when the wasps have started hatching in the ceiling that it's time to put in a request to Craig Carter to do the seasonal spraying, so they don't get too bad. Unlike some other teachers who really need updated space and equipment, I'm picking science and arts, I can teach history and social studies in almost any space. With that said, I think it's important to point out that our classrooms are substandard. When Yellow Springs High School was built in the 1960s, the classrooms were designed for lecture format classes with students relying on textbooks for the bulk of their learning. They were seated in neat rows that needed relatively little space. But education has changed and student needs have changed. Today, when there are 30 students in my classroom, it's hard for me to get to the back of the classroom to help the students there. It's very difficult to rearrange desks if we need to do group work, let alone project work, anything that's not strictly paper and pencil type stuff. There's almost no storage space. When I started in 1993, I think I had maybe two students who were on IEPs in the entire day. Today, we have dozens of students on 504s and IEPs who each have special learning requirements, adaptations, and modifications that are extremely difficult, as you've heard, to respect and fulfill. It is, while I am getting by in my classroom, I think our students deserve better. I think it's time to design our school for the needs of students today that we have, not the students of 1963. We need to think about the future and designing us, and making our school work for students in the future. Finally, in the hallway, the main hallway of the school, there's a plaque that was put up that the school was constructed in 1963, and it says, "The school that community built. May this expression of cooperation and faith in the future be a challenge to all." And I think it's time for us to accept that challenge for, for our community and our students going forward. Thank you.
Any other teachers, educators, staff?
Hello, I'm Rebecca Musser, I'm a school psychologist for the district. You've heard a lot about the needs for special education. To add to that, as a special education team leader, those of us that do the assessments, we need specific spaces to be able to work with our students. People like the speech therapist, social workers, occupational therapist, physical therapist. We need spaces where that we could work one-on-one with our students, but also we need those spaces to be in places where we can hear our students and have room for our students to move around. Currently, our speech therapist at the high school has a room in the gym to work on speech. I'll let you just have that stigma. In the elementary, she doesn't have a permanent spot. She's either borrowing it from one space or another. I borrow space at the high school for testing. It's permanently mine, but the space I use to test children is a room with electrical panels, three by three, that scare the students. It's not a comfortable place to do assessments, to figure out what is your cognitive ability, what is your academic ability, what is your behavioral and emotional ability. That same room, you can hear everything in the room next to it, every single word, every conversation. Nothing is private, and these are supposed to be HIPAA-compliant conversations. There is a need to do better for our students. There is a need for us to be able to provide our students what they deserve. And to do that, we need correct space, we need correct, correct building materials and support from the community to understand what all students need just on those that we typically think of, but all the students. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Morano. I hadn't planned on speaking today, but I was just sort of moved to do it by listening to my colleagues. So I'm the school counselor for grades 10, 11, and 12, and I want to speak to the school counseling needs in my building. And it's funny that Rebecca was talking about privacy, because that's one of my biggest concerns. Where she tests students, I'm on the other side of that office, and I can hear, like, so it's Rebecca, and then an office, and then an office. And I can hear everything, everything. I have to knock on the wall for my colleague and be like, hey, turn your radio up. And then when we have to turn up music, then we can't hear our students. And so the privacy and the confidentiality of the work that the school psych does and the school counselors do, and, you know, it's, it's just critical at this point. I can hear all of those things. We also have Um every student can see every single other person who's coming into our offices. There's very little privacy. Um in that counseling suite, we need rooms that are soundproof. We need um rooms for small groups, we need rooms for students to who are dysregulated to be able to calm down and regulate themselves. We need space for testing. Um you know, I was involved with a poor student in the um in in the elevator landing building. We didn't have nowhere else to put that kid. I'm testing students in the library, which um um has been um made a lovelier space, but when the lunch happens, my testers are hearing lunch. And it's wildly, wildly inappropriate. Um let's see, where else do I test students? Test students in the um conference office behind um the main office, and you can often hear the music in the gym. You can often hear performance students in there or um students who are learning their their guitar class, like it's just not private. It's embarrassing, I think, to meet parents in there too, because they're we're having, you know, five oh four meetings and graduation planning meetings in a place that, you know, the that the air conditioning thing is like flapping in the ceiling, and you can hear everything that's going on around there. Um we need secure material storage. Um we need the Q and M folders to be accessible. Um we need a guidance um sort of secretary who is in our space, because they are down the hallway in the office. It's very difficult um to to work there. Um I had a community member come into my office earlier in the year that I needed to print something for, and when I printed this information for this gentleman, um the light that I have next to my printer leaks. It leaks every time I print something. And so the person said to me like, oh, what's that all about? And I said, well, you know, I'm not really sure, you know, maybe there's not enough power. And then they a little bit chastised me for having a refrigerator in my office. Well, if you didn't have a refrigerator in there, maybe you'd have more space, but there's no space to put a lunch or a soda or anything, you know, that I would need if I were able to, you know, like, I don't know, anyway. Um I I that has really stuck with me, you know, like, why do you have a fridge? Well, I don't have anywhere else to put my stuff. Um let's see. Um we need a healthy environment. Um like I said, we're in the brick thin area. Um we do have the non-toxic black mold. Um it often smells terrible in there. Um it gets really humid and wet, and the carpet has been like sucked dry, I don't even know how many times. It's disgusting. It is disgusting. Um our screens are ripped. We get air conditioning in the summer. We get heat in, no, that's wrong, it's backwards. I get air conditioning when it's cold outside. I get heat when it's hot outside, and sometimes I get both in the same day. Sometimes I get both of those things in the same day. Um let's see. Um and then I and then I have a safety concern um for for staff to be able to communicate. We need a better way to talk to each other from across the building when there is an emergency. You know, we don't have enough walkie-talkies. We don't have a system where we can communicate with each other when when an emergency happens. We had to take the custodian's walkie-talkie and give it to the nurse. You know, like we they there are so many things that we could add that would create a better environment for our students and a better way for us to serve them. With the rising mental health needs, it is critical that we have more space than we do to attend to these children.
So it's a true witness to having attended and or worked in every school in the district, including those that are closed. I would simply say it's time. And we've had it all, we've discussed, we've dialogued, it's time. Each day I come to Mills Lawn, each day I go to the high school, and the smells, not literal smells, and the psychological, emotional toll that is taken on our kids is disturbing. And they only used to that when our kids go to other schools, they often say, well, why can't we have this? I hear that all the time. Why can't we have this? They got it, and I'm not into the comparison, because Brandon, you mentioned about being a health inspector, but I do worry about SEL, social emotional learning, of our young people, particularly from the standpoint, they see what's going on in other towns and other communities. And as a proud alumnus, and I say that proudly, as a proud alumnus in Yellow Springs Schools, it's becoming disheartening to see all the things that has been mentioned today in terms of what's wrong with our schools. Are there things wrong with our schools? Yes, there are, from a structural standpoint, but then there's things right with our schools in terms of our young people, the dedicated staff, dedicated administrators, dedicated board. It's time. In fact, it's past time. Thank you.
I'm Rachel Madison. I'm an intervention specialist at the high school, and this is actually my first year here at Yellow Springs. Thank you for having me to talk. As an outsider in Yellow Springs, I was excited to be invited into a community that really takes pride in doing what is right and standing up for the basic rights and needs for disadvantaged. I held high expectations of a community that fostered forward thinking, open-mindedness, and activism. I felt like, wow, as an intervention specialist, I can finally find my home and be a part of a community that will protect and advocate the students that I love and care for so much. Unfortunately, from a physical aspect of the building, I was met with something that doesn't provide the necessary considerations to meet some of the most basic needs for my special education students. Students need designated areas to test, sensory rooms to decompress and safely take a break, noise, lighting, and temperature regulation to foster an environment that can be both physically and emotionally tolerable for all of our students to aid in the prevention of negative behaviors and meltdowns. I work in a classroom that makes co-teaching nearly impossible due to lack of space. I have no room to walk around to assist students, and I have bruises all over my legs from knocking into desks and tripping over bags because there's nowhere to store people's belongings. There are things that are required to create a culture of equality and equity for everyone, and all of our students deserve that. And we're in, we have the control to make this change. Thank you.
I'm the assistant principal at the middle school and high school. This is my second year in Yellow Springs. Um I'm going to speak about very specific things. Um I know it's unusual for an administrator to speak, so um the first thing I would like to talk about is um where we do our work. So I meet with students all day long. That's my job, all day, for all different things. I meet with parents all day long. When I'm on phone calls with parents about sensitive topics involving suspensions, academic issues, um graduation catch-up, service hours, all types of things, I have had numerous conversations with parents where they have asked me why I was being so disrespectful because they hear music in the background. And I have to explain, my apologies, both of my doors are closed. That is actually gym class, and it is not actually in my office. Um I share a wall with the athletic director. That's great. We get along great together. However, the athletic director has to change his needs when he has meetings, and I have to change mine when I have meetings, because we can hear each other's conversations clear as day, as if we were sitting next to each other due to the hole in the wall. Um so it's kind of our joke that, you know, we kind of like watch out and listen for each other, um but literally every single conversation, every single meeting, you can hear, you can hear every single conversation outside my door. Um there are certain points in time, if Mr. Hattard is sitting in a specific location with his door closed and my door is closed, I can hear every word he says. I can hear every word the student says back to him. That's through two doors. Uh we just had a fire drill yesterday. Have to do it every month. Weather was great, perfect day to do it. However, this is the only place I have been that I have to think about, when was the last time it rained, when we have a fire or a tornado drill? Because if it has rained recently, I have to wade through inches of water to turn the alarm off. If we're having a tornado drill, I can't have students in the basement when there's five inches of water. It has created a culture where students want to give up. And our students don't deserve that. They deserve much, much more. No student should have to come to a school and feel so degraded because they feel like nobody cares or wants to invest in them. They don't have a problem with the people. They love our staff. We have great relationships. We do all types of things for our students. They are more than grateful. However, on a daily basis, they ask, why is this like this? Why does it have to be like this? Why can't we have this? Why do I have to go see the counselor in the gym? Why do I have to hear everyone going to the bathroom during my conference? Why do I have to have students having their private doctors and therapy appointments in my office because there is no space? It's just unacceptable. There has to be a change. Thank you.
I am the student advocate for the district. Um this is my first year here. Um and I just want to share a few of my observances and experiences. I was hired here to work as a district employee, meaning I am to be at both the middle school, high school, as well as Mills Lawn. The days that I end up coming down to Mills Lawn, firstly, I will say I had a great time with these kids. Secondly, I will say, there are days where people like Mr. Gudjel have to pause because there's no space for me to interact with the kids here outside of their classrooms. On the flip side of that, at the middle school, high school, I am very blessed to have a decent space. However, just because I give it a decent space does not mean that the students that I service feel the same way. Just last week, it was so cold in my room, I had a student in complete meltdown, asking if she could just come back later because it was so cold. It's seventy degrees outside, and I sit every single day with a hoodie and a parka over my legs because it's legitimately freezing. Two doors down is the thermostat with Mr. Gillette. Anytime we touch that thermostat, even if it's simply two degrees, his kids sweat buckets, while simultaneously the kids in my room are turning into popsicles. I don't know if any of you have ever experienced any sort of psychoemotional hardship, maybe even meltdown. It's difficult to get through those severely difficult moments when your body cannot even regulate its temperature. It's almost psychological torture. Additionally, testing spaces and privacy, along with with spaces that simply serve students in the ways that they need. I have two particular students who often struggle with lack of medication. Either they run out, or the dosage is simply not high enough. I love those kids with my full heart. However, to isolate them in my room for the duration of the day that they are not medicated is unsafe, it's unfair, and it's a disservice to the rest of the students who need me. So spaces like my colleagues have been saying, sensory rooms, testing spaces, um and I'm gonna echo Naomi Hyatt, I don't know where she is. I'm gonna echo Naomi Hyatt's phrase of student dignity. For a senior to have to sit at an elevator landing to test to graduate directly translates as, we don't care, we just want you out of here. And I know that's not how the educators of this district feel, and I've been here for seven months. I also echo the statements from Ms. Fiola and Mr. Gudjel in the way of, this is just beyond any sort of equitable education that I've ever seen. I don't I don't find it fair or humane in any way for us to expect children, literal children, to sit into spaces that as adults, we would never volunteer to be in. Thank you.
Eric has to work in a closet, by the way.
So my name is Ms. Miller. I'm the intervention specialist for the fifth and sixth grade team here at Mills Lawn. I'm gonna keep it short because I really appreciate everything that all my colleagues have said. I agree with everything that everybody has said. We did a really great book read called Abolitionist Teaching by Bettina Love this year, and one of the statements that she made really stuck with me, and she basically said that in order to build a more equitable society, those who have need to give up something for those who have not, in order to to even the even the experience of everybody in our in our country. And I've lived and worked in different places in the nation, and what I've seen is that typically the people who have less are more willing to put forward um more so that everybody can have more. For example, they're more willing to pay a higher tax so that others can have more. And I'm working in a community right now, and and I very honestly believe that there is more in this community than I've ever actually witnessed in my teaching career. As a worker here in Yellow Springs, I personally give a hundred per a hundred dollars every single month on my own personal taxes to invest in the in the community of Yellow Springs, and I'm proud to do that as a teacher. I I like giving back to the community I work in because I know it it helps everybody. And personally, I judge a society by how we treat our elderly and how we treat our young people. And I agree with what Mr. Gudjel said. I think now is the time. I think the community needs to come together and those who have more be willing to give a little bit more, um because I know those who have less would give more so that others could have more. And I feel that we live in a, we are fortunate to live in a a society right now where we can give if we have more. And I just really want to encourage the community and anybody who has a vote to do that, because now is the time. And what we do now really affects our future, and our kids deserve better. They're growing up in a planet that has less of a future, and and we need to give them a place where they can become empowered to get the tools they need to make important changes on our planet. Um the environment you live in, work in, for our children and our staff, really does affect you and how well you can learn and your self-esteem and the person that you become. And I think that now is the time. I think that we as adults have the responsibility to do that collectively, and um I just really hope that we we take this opportunity to do that. And I just really hope that we, we take this opportunity to do that. When you look around in our community, everywhere I drive, everybody has a better school than the one here. And I don't like to use the word shame, but I do feel that that's shameful. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Taylor Hemrick and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Mills Lawn. This is my first year teaching. I'm quite nervous, so please bear with me if my voice quivers. I wrote this speech for a January board meeting, but I, at the time, got nervous and chickened out. But Maya's courage to speak today, also as a first-year employee of this district, really inspired me. We tell our students that we care about them, but we put them in an environment that says otherwise. We tell them that they all matter equally, but is that what they feel when they are in a wheelchair or crutches and their access to some areas of the buildings are limited? We tell them they all matter equally, but is that what they feel when they visit a school outside of this district and see facilities that would meet their needs? I was first drawn to work here by the culture of this village that reflected inclusion and acceptance of all people. However, the physical conditions of the building I work in each day do not reflect these same values. I would like to credit the following facts to a publication released by the Behavioral and Brain Sciences Department at the University of Washington. American students average 11,700 hours of their lives in a school building from kindergarten to 12th grade. Many of the classrooms here are equipped with window air conditioning units to try and combat the heat. These units are loud. Often teachers have to turn them off in order for students to hear them clearly. Excessive external noise such as these air conditioning units hinders learning, especially for special education students. Students with hearing impairment may find it particularly difficult to decipher teacher's words from competing background noise. Students with autism may be overwhelmed by the successive external noise combined with regular classroom noise. Of course, if we do turn the unit off so our students can hear us clearly, our classrooms quickly become very hot. Or sometimes these units are not capable of keeping up with the hot outside temperatures. Research has shown the optimal temperature range for learning appears to be between 68 and 74 degrees. Teachers in this district have recorded classroom temperatures of up to 83 degrees and some of my colleagues have shared temperatures higher than that today. Due to the many windows that line our classrooms, one area we appear to be doing abundantly well in, at least in my area of the building, is plenty of natural light. However, with approximately 50 school shootings in 2022 alone, this provides us with knots in our stomachs rather than comfort. I would also like to speak up on behalf of our students because although they are young, they do pay attention and they are aware that there are safety threats to them. And this is something that they worry about and ask their teachers questions about. I know many of us have been seeing the severity of the teacher shortage on the news lately. According to the Dayton Daily News data analysis, the number of bachelor's degrees awarded across all fields has increased 5 out of 10,000. Still, we see the number of education degrees has declined by hundreds. Many of my college peers would not consider Yellow Springs when submitting their applications due to the, the condition of the facilities and lack of technological advancement. These conditions do not support the education and training that recent college graduates such as myself received on how to facilitate learning. My peers asked me, "Why would I sign up to spend the next 30-plus years of my career in a building that is falling apart now?" I believe that investing in our schools is the best investment we can make. You are not just investing in a building, you are investing in equal access to education for all of our students. You are investing in every child that enters that school building. And by doing this, you are investing in the future of this village, state, and country. Thank you.
Well, you know, on behalf of myself, I appreciate, you know, everyone coming up here. I know it can be difficult. This has been a contentious issue inside of the village and the district. So I trust you with my children. Some of you guys know my kids, hopefully in a good way. I know probably at least you as well. I appreciate you getting up here. We wanted to make certain that we are hearing your voices in this process, especially as we're trying to narrow down and figure out what to do with facilities. So thank you. Thanks for the courage for getting up and speaking.
Thank you.
I've got a list I'll go down. I realize that maybe some people have already spoken and that's totally fine. So if you signed up on this, on accident or thinking that was for the, for the previous session, that's totally good. Jerry Papania, up first. Remind you, it's a community comment. We're gonna do it three minutes time.
I'm Jerry Papania. I've been a 44-year resident of the Yellow Springs community. I have two sons that are through the Yellow Springs school system. And I'm retired after a decades-long career as a facilities engineer. I've been a member of the school facilities committee that has done a deep dive into the needs of both Mills Lawn and middle high school facilities. Following are my personal comments that are not intended to represent the view of the larger facilities committee. According to the survey that was completed following the 2021 levy, the number-one reason cited for failure was cost. This is an inconvenient truth that the board and the administration needs to give serious consideration when choosing a plan to be financed by the new levy being considered. I feel it is unlikely that voters are going to approve a levy for a new K-12 project, the cost of which is 60% higher than the one that failed. Putting levy on the ballot, which is likely to be rejected, just pushes any remedy further down the road and increases rehabilitation and construction costs. In my opinion, the board should consider a lower mileage rate and a higher income tax rate than currently proposed and adopt the A1 plan. That plan fills many of the pressing facility needs that our dedicated teachers have previously illuminated and has the highest likelihood of passing. And I would feel would be the most equitable for the income demographic of the community. It should be noted that the A1 plan capital cost estimate includes significant costs that will, that will be reduced upon further detailed evaluation. If the A1 plan as it exists cannot gain board's approval, I would recommend a reduced mileage rate and an income tax rate increase of not more than 1%. The resulting sum generated could then be used as a budget to define the scope of a possible expanded A1 plan, an abbreviated A2 plan, or an abbreviated hybrid plan. An abbreviated hybrid plan may have the second-best chance of voter approval, while the resulting tax burden would be greater than the A1 plan and a making support for the community of the new bill. These are ones of the project stakeholders and are many and must be matched with the resources.
Jerry, it is three minutes. So we can say goodbye. Thank you. Naomi Bandorno.
Naomi Bandorno, alumni, I'm a parent, I'm a community member. I, so I, when the agenda was put out, there was information about this new Plan X. And I knew since all of our kids are home, because these wonderful teachers are here, that there would be a lot of ends during the day. So working parents and, and parents with kids at home wouldn't be able to be here. So I started a Google Doc, sent around what was in the agenda to just allow parents to get their input. And I'm gonna just read their comments. But first, I want to say thank you to the teachers who are here and spoke. I care about this for my own kids certainly, but really, it's for you. Because without all of you, it doesn't matter what our school buildings look like. And what I heard from the teachers is that significant changes to the floor plans are needed. And that renovations will certainly help. A lot of the issues mentioned, but just aren't enough. And we're gonna be left with a lot more needs that are gonna cost more in the future. So there were some people who did not want to leave a comment, but they just wanted to sign on saying that they supported this Plan X2, which, if you haven't looked at the agenda, I look at the agenda, I'm not gonna go through them. The Plan X2, but it's a new, it's a three, grade three through 12 out of Enin. Demo, reno, and add, and a pre-K through two here in Mills Lawn that leaves space for some other stuff. So it's some creative thinking. Forty-four people signed on saying they were in support of it, didn't want to make a comment. All right, comments about Plan X2. This is from me, Naomi Bandorno. I am optimistic about Plan X2. I think it shows creative, out-of-the-box thinking and is a great compromise that addresses many of the complaints and concerns about previous plans. It strikes me to be a fiscally responsible investment in our schools that meets the priorities set by our educational professionals and will serve the village for generations. It appears to meet all or most of the priorities set out by our educational professionals and would cause minimal disruption during construction, which is a big issue for me and I think, I can't speak for the teachers, but. It seems fiscally smart, takes advantage of state reimbursement, which would mean that in 10 years, property taxes would go down significantly. With a renovation plan, property taxes are the same throughout. I think that's a really big deal. Getting rid of rent for the board offices and possibly even creating a source of income through rental space, this is forward-thinking and creates flexibility in the future. Kristy Myers, mom of first grader and a three-year-old. I think Plan X addresses the concerns of the majority of the community. It maximizes the money you get from the state. It keeps students on the Mills Lawn property. It addresses our need for new structures. I commend the board for working so hard to find a solution that works for our village. David Kelly, taxpayer. And I happen to know he's.
Three minutes.
All right, so I'm gonna tag Amy Bailey, I think is after me. I knew I wouldn't get through all of the comments.
Amy Bailey.
Thanks, Angie. I stopped at David.
Hi, I'm Amy Bailey. And like Naomi said, I'm just gonna continue the comments that we've received in the last 24 hours since this, since this plan has been brought to our attention. So David Kelly, taxpayer. Plan X2 appears at first glance to be the first viable option that can truly be considered a compromise. It addresses a community desire to preserve the Mills Lawn and green space. It generates a match in funds from the state, which appeals to many voters. And it is on the lower end of the spectrum with regards to cost after the match, which appeals to all. Please give X2 some serious consideration as a fair compromise. Benjamin Akers. Plan X both maximizes the state contribution and keeps Mills Lawn preserving downtown and village history intact. It is by far the best proposal. Erin and Alicia, widder, moms of five-year-old, up-and-coming kinder owner, and taxpayers. Plan X2 gives everyone some of what they want while minimizing disruptions and maximizing the state offset. Great work to the board for showing our kids how to do the hard stuff and find ways to meet in the middle. Corey Van Oostel, parent, alum, taxpayer, and optimist. Plan X has a great name and opens up interesting possibilities to support current needs. Potential for collaboration and supports village growth. I am ready to hear more about this. Ready to work out. Sammy Saber, villager, father of two elementary schoolers. Listening to the long, passionate, and heartfelt conversation that has occurred in the village over the past few years, I hope the school board will take the time to earnestly consider Plan X2, which tries to keep taxes down, taxes low by maximizing the state reimbursement, renovate and restore Mills Lawn and preserve green space at the heart of our wonderful community. Anna Hall, mother of kinder owner and a one-month-old alum, taxpayer. I am excited and optimistic about Plan X2 and hope that the school board will continue to investigate this option that takes so many wants and needs into account. It creates schools where children are safe and comfortable, maximizes the state contribution and preserves the school and green space in the heart of our community while also expanding the services provided at the Mills Lawn location. Lisa Verandani and Joshua Smith, villagers, alumni, and taxpayers. Plan X2 is a great solution and compromise that maximizes state funding, making it a better value for our tax dollars. Makes meaningful long-term updates to the buildings and maintains the Mills Lawn property and green space. Furthermore, it includes the space for a pre-K program, ultimately will make the village more affordable and equitable for families of mixed socioeconomic levels. Steve Sykes Gilbert, parent, alumni, and taxpayer. I appreciate the effort to find middle ground with this new plan. It's thoughtful and I'm interested in learning more about it, plus any option with pre-K is appealing. Julie Bergman Lee. I think it's worth exploring both Plan X and C6. Plan X is intriguing out-of-the-box thinking that gets more state funding, but creates new questions to answer.
All right. Thank you. Mary Beebe.
Hello, thank you. I'm Mary Beebe. I'm a villager. I support public schools. I support funding for public schools. Our kids went to public schools. My husband was a teacher in public schools. And I was a related service provider for kids with five-year-old plants and IEPs. I worked in several schools of various conditions. Some very old, some new, some great, some very poor conditions. Positives of each of the plans have been put forth over several meetings. We all know that. The best plan for our schools is a plan that will pass. The plan that will pass is one that keeps Mills Lawn as a school for all of our elementary students, a school that will meet elementary students' needs in an elementary environment. And a plan that respects, addresses, considers affordability. Our neighbors' tax burden matters. Education is about excellent educational experiences. Excellent educational experiences can happen in well-acquainted buildings and buildings of more modest means. This is not to say that our students should be learning in schools that are as they are. Our students need, need many things. We need significant improvements, as has been noted by many. Please, school board, please, advance a plan that has the highest percentage chance of passing so our community can celebrate passing a levy and so improvements for our students and teachers, our community, can start as soon as possible. Thank you.
I think the next few speakers may be teachers who've already spoken, but I'll call names out anyway. John Day. Okay, Lori. Laura Curlis.
Good morning, everyone. Lauren Curlis, former teacher, community member, administrator, lawyer, and E with a spreadsheet. I've spent four hours today trying to work out what each of these different options will mean for me and for my neighbors. And I picked a couple of my friends and put them on my spreadsheet. So I went to the auditor's tax site. I looked up the most recent tax levy, which was the FIRE levy. So that's pretty comparable to what everyone's gonna be paying. So you work out what the millage is and you take the 9.1 and 3 and multiply it by the millage. It's more complicated than that, of course, but let me just say this. I've got some insights that I didn't expect from this little exercise and I would love to share them more with you. But we'd have to have more time for that. But I can share the spreadsheet. The bottom line is that several of these options, when you work out the income tax piece, the income tax is a sledgehammer, not a scalpel. And the reason for that is you can only put it on the ballot in 0.25% increments. So you may want a 0.6, but guess what? You gotta go to 0.75. So it always brings in more than, than you say you need on, on the architect's spreadsheet. So for example, the B1 option is pretty much right on the money in terms of what you need when you put the combination of the real estate levy as well as the income tax. But X2 overtaxes. And it overtaxes by about $3 million. But X2 overtaxes, and it overtaxes by about $3 million. Now, I know that you need some money that maybe you could spend on maintenance, and we won't see another levy for quite some time. But you really need to, you really need to run these numbers out all the way. One of my neighbors has a house worth appraised by the auditor of $196,000. At a $50,000 annual income, the X2 option as well as the B1 option will cost that person Now, I would love to talk, okay, so I would just love to refine these numbers with the treasurer, the auditor. I think I'm pretty close or right on, but the numbers will shock you. And this is why Mary said, we have to have a levy that will pass. And I don't know what that is, because these numbers are high. And part of the reason is it's where we live. We live in a place with the highest water and sewer rates, and we have lots of levies. So thank you very much.
Ashley Polker. Jennifer Scavone. Yep. Let me just go read over them, just to make sure. Community comments as well. Connecticut Sanford. Deborah Maybrough. Eli Horwitz. All right. That ends the community comments.
Do we have time?
There's not a debate.
Oh, is there? I apologize. Thank you. Thanks for pointing it out. Brandon Lowery. And Diane Tewfert.
I wasn't planning to talk about this part, but there have been a lot of references to feeling of shame in Yellow Springs because other local schools nearby have newer, better schools. Just some context for that, it's not that other communities care more about children, it's that they're paying less. They're paying far less because of the OFCC, the state agency mechanism for funding, is based on per capita income. And for Xenia, for Fairborn, Beaver Creek, Cedarville, it's far less per capita in those communities than Yellow Springs. We are being asked to pay 73% of whatever new building we have, and other communities in our county are paying less than 50%, sometimes far less than 50%. So that's an important context. We're being asked, what we're being asked to do is a far bigger lift than those other communities. What I did plan to say today is that you all have asked the community to express concerns over the last few months, and I think the community stepped up and did that. Three well-attended listening sessions. There was a growing concern over affordability. There was a strong sense of wanting to fix the problems. That's a consensus in our community. People want to fix all the important things that are being discussed today. But they're very concerned about affordability, and the concern grew as the numbers came out. In the third listening session, that was the dominant theme. That was the thing people talked about more than any other. Three parents of school-aged children talked about their fear that their family would have to move out of Yellow Springs if, because they couldn't afford the levy or the more expensive levy. So I'm just asking all of you to keep in mind that concern is real. People want to fix the problems, but affordability is a huge issue. I appreciate all the input from teachers. I would bet that most teachers don't live in Yellow Springs, and I know many who don't because they can't afford to. So affordability is a very big issue in our community. Please keep that in front of your consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Slaughter. I'm a resident. I attended all these schools. I'm a part of the facilities committee. Appreciate all the comments highlighted by the teaching staff. I've read their needs and wants many times during my tenure on the facilities committee, but I've heard no discussion about the community. The community, students, and teachers need to make decisions on how we move forward. All the complaints about the current facilities are valid. I believe, or I thought our architect, Mike Rush, would address many of these and just about all the options. I've heard a comment that someone's child asked, why don't we have new schools like other communities? Well, it's because someone has to pay for it, and not everyone in this community can accept this challenge. How do we move forward when we have no industry, limited housing, no affordable housing to attract more families? It's a difficult decision. I initially believed a combination of the A1, A2 plan was where we needed to start. We have many more plans now, and I look forward to some clarification on some of those because I don't completely understand them. I also have some unsettling about the state reimbursement program. Can you guarantee the state reimbursement will be applied to reduce the bond issue in the future is my question. Thank you.
Would you like to speak? No. I'll allow two more, because we, so go ahead. But just go up there already.
Jessica Thomas. I am a writer for the Yellow Springs News. I am not reporting on this meeting. I am a parent of a future Yellow Springs student, and I sub in the schools. So when the last levy came up, I, we looked at our finances as a family and realized that we probably couldn't afford to vote for it. That was the reality for our family. We were one of the families who was nervous that we wouldn't be able to stay here. As a family, we decided that I would take on more work, which has been subbing in the schools. So I would like to be able to vote for whatever plan is presented to the community, but I know that there are families who don't have the time to work two jobs, or they already have parents working two jobs. So I just ask the board that whatever, whatever you decide, keeps in consideration that some families aren't already stretched to the limit. Some families have the affordance of being able to do a little bit more, but not everybody has that option. I would also like you to consider that a lot of low-income families rely on the proximity of Mills Lawn to downtown and to their homes, like most of the green mat housing is within walking distance of Mills Lawn. So when you're thinking about affordability, how does moving all of the schools to the edge of town work for people whose kids have to walk to school? So I just, I think that, I think that there are good options in here. I really am excited to hear about the new X plans. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Matt?
Hello, my name is Matthew Kirk. I'm a village resident and a parent of a fourth-grade student at Mills Lawn. And you know, as we discuss this over and over again, and listening to the teachers today, what's become really obvious is, you know, that our problem is that we have chronically under-invested in our schools. And this is something that's happened over decades. You know, I talked with my wife. She was in the very first middle school class to go from Morgan Middle School to the now Trailers. And even when she talks about that, they were insufficient from the outset. Imagine the downgrade of this beautiful building to going into these brick-and-trails. And they felt that as students. So imagine now, here we are 35 years later, we still have the same facilities. So when I look at these plans, I only see one plan here that really continues that legacy of chronic investment, and that's the A1 option. So I would ask that you strike that, because the last thing we want to do, especially if we're looking to address affordability, is to continue to chronically under-invest in our schools. Our middle school, there's nothing there even to salvage. It's agreed across the board that that is a tear-down situation. So we should learn lessons from our past mistakes and not make the same mistake in the future. Right now, we're making a foundational investment for the community that is supposed to last generations. The last thing we do, need to do is any kind of pass measure. I know people are concerned about what's passing or what's not passing, and you know, that's a, that's a political question. That's not necessarily the, you know, responsibility. The board shouldn't make a bad decision because, you know, everybody else wants to make a bad decision. I think we need to make a good decision. We need to stand behind a good decision. We take it to the ballot. If it fails, we take it back to the ballot. And you do it again, and again, and again, because you say, this is the right decision. This is what makes the most sense for our district, and you have to have some conviction in order to deliver that. Thanks. Have a good one.
All right. That closes the community comment section. I'm going to call it out a little, a little, a quick five-minute break. Five minutes, we got, oh, it's a break, 12:15. All right, let's, let's restart. So we are, we are actually on 2.1, which we, it's plugged into 2.3, which is Plan X, which is, I don't know, with you, with the options that are up there. They've increased a few numbers, so that will ease the discussion as we go a little bit down, and hopefully we can send them off in two more time. Sorry, 2.3.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to leave this, but I guess I'll start with just saying how we sort of got to our expansion today, but I really circle back onto some of that expansion and the work that we've been doing. But this is just us investigating how we can refine things better, you know? We, you know, a lot of people liked the idea of the C plans when those first came out, and then the numbers came in, and we saw where we were. So we started working, trying to work those plans to make them better. And that's where we got the six through 12, you know, can we shrink that building? And then our architect helped us come up, maybe we can make that building larger and look at what we're doing in Mills Lawn differently. And that is where we got to Plan X. So it was creative thinking, and that's how we got there, but there'll be more expansion on that as we go. But Terry wants to say something.
I also, I also want to jump in here and then say that the core team, with the architect, the treasurer, the superintendent, and two board members, four of the pre-K and board member, everything, all met last Friday. I believe it was last Friday. And as we were talking about the program of requirements, which we will go through in a minute, and talking about shaving off square footage, my question was, why would we want to shave off square footage on part of the building where we are going to get reimbursement? And perhaps we could shave off square footage where we weren't? So that led us through discussion to this plan. And I will say that everyone in the room, all five of us, enthusiastically supported this plan. This was one week ago to get, today, enthusiastically supported this plan. So I'm just curious to hear later comments about why there is now not enthusiastic support of this plan as a plan that is a compromise that allows folks to step back and see others' viewpoints. But that was how we arrived together at the X plan. I'd like to clarify that I, at the time, because we, at that core meeting, Mike, where is these X plans? It was a kind of new concept. It was a possible compromise, and it was an effort to get more money from the state, which makes a lot of sense if we can, if it's for something that we want. That makes sense. That helps affordability. However, at the time, I said, although I was feeling kind of positive, definitely, that I needed time to think about it, and I needed time to talk to people about it, because it's important to hear from other people to be able to think well about something so new. And that's what I did, and so, yeah, the enthusiasm went on my part, but I think it's worth us hearing this. I mean, obviously, we're going to hear about it, and I'll discuss why.
Why don't we hear what it is, so that people watch in and actually have some basis for it?
I think this is where I will turn to my, I think you're, you can walk us through this, and then if that's okay, I will add my interpretation of it and how I weigh the benefits and the drawbacks of it after that, but I think we should hear it first.
True. Okay. So, and I'll repeat something that Terry said, is the basic premise behind the X plan is to reduce costs by increasing a component of the plan that's co-funded and decreasing the component of the plan that's locally funded. So it's kind of those two levers working together got the prices to the point they're at. So for example, on the, I'll get to that in a second. The plan is preserving Mills Lawn as an early learning center for grades pre-K to 2. When half of the load was out of this building, there can be conversation about what happens in the other half. So is that the board office that moves here? Are there other program functions that can move here? It will give you the space to add pre-K to this campus. I don't want, what I'm saying, it does sound like I'm advocating, but bear with me for a second. It preserves the two campuses. It preserves one campus in the heart of town for young learners. It preserves the 2002 additions on some of these projects. So it answers many of the questions that the C options answered. And then at Mills Lawn, or at the middle school, high school, we don't do the full K12, nor do we do the 5.6, but the 6.12 or 5.12, we do a 3.12. So that building becomes an intermediate school slash middle school slash high school. The addition gets larger to serve the additional student population. So playing questions around one gym or two gyms start to become clearer, in my view, compared to the 6.12 options. So that's essentially the lay of the land. The X2 version is a demo, reno, add, so it preserves all the benefits of the Cs, and that you would keep the gymnasiums, you'd keep the 2002 addition, but we replace the modulators, the tower, and the bandroom. It's just that the addition would get larger. Secondly, as we're envisioning improvements at Mills Lawn in this scenario, it could be a phased renovation that would not require swing space. And if you do your first project first, and half the load moves out of this building, this building now is half-occupied, we could do a phased renovation where we're essentially phasing the central plant out of the building and then flipping it and doing the other side. I will say, a bit of a hasty decision made in the core meeting, which will require some thoughts, some wrestling, is we also reduced the Mills Lawn budget by half. And the concept there was half the load's coming out, we'll reduce half the budget. This is where we could get creative with some possible future financing sources, for example, offsetting future board office rent, potentially construction contingency save or bid results savings under phase one could be applied, and possibly even like energy grants. So while we cut the budget for the Mills Lawn renovation in half, I do think we have some kind of viable funding strategies that might allow that budget to increase. So, that's okay.
Thank you. So I'll take it from there. Thank you, Mike. I was...
Could I ask just a technical question?
Is it the time now for asking technical questions?
Wait. On the, the reno, on the X2, is that adding another gym and what is the music room, what is that looking at? Can you speak to that?
So I think, is that okay if I take that one? I think this is part of those details that we have to decide today if this project is worth looking into and ironing out those things. There are some, some assumptions that we made during the core team meeting that we wouldn't want to make to run by the whole board to make sure that we are looking right. But yes, those are good questions, and if the board here decides that there is potential in this and we need to investigate in it, then those are the type of questions we'd do. So here is why I find that this plan has a lot of potential, because for several reasons. It addresses, it maximizes the money we can get back from the state. That's a way to elevate, to provide tax relief. That's a way to elevate, to provide tax relief to our constituents, in a way that the other plans would do less for the same money, or would do less for more money. So I think that this one provides here, checks several boxes in the affordability issue here. It addresses the concerns over environmental, because we are doing our best to preserve two buildings, two campuses. We remain, we retain the best parts of the high school, we keep all of Mills Lawn, and we also get a chance to build new and to add new, and to meet new standards of insulation and heat and cooling, new retentions, and new efficiency. It also has a lot of pedagogical benefits, from what I've seen, but of course, I want to make sure that we ask those questions to the teachers that are still there, but also to the principals and to our administrators here that are more likely to explain them than me. But as a mom of a third grader, I know that, I've learned as a parent of a third grader that there are some programs that start in third grade, such as gifted program and introductions to new specials, and I can see how this plan could really provide more potential for that, and I would want the principals to elaborate on that in a minute if they can. It also allows to right-size the common space of Mills Lawn, so we know that we have a crowded situation in the hallway and around the lunch serving lines. Well, if we reduce the population by that, we don't need the addition of a kitchen, but we can also, we can also serve the population that will be here. It would allow us also to best use the K through twelve size of the kitchen and cafeteria that we provided on the inner road, so we would make more of that addition there. It would allow us also to, when we talk about maintenance and long-term planning for this, it would allow us to have a more workable ratio of renovation in the future and build new, so that we can actually, from this plan on, we could look at phased-in capital improvements, which is something that board member Magnus has talked about a lot. This would set us up for that. It would allow us also to do student collaboration on the three to twelve, which is really the best age group for that, and it would allow the teachers to have co-teaching opportunities. And the way that I'm imagining that is that if we have, in the new additions, we have classrooms that communicate, then we can have teachers that work together, and they can decrease their course prep, which, you know, is an important appeal to when you hire new teachers. And if we have the small group spaces that our teachers have so well spoken about today, this would serve our student population so well. We definitely have that need, I think we've heard that loud and clear today. And also, it would solve all the questions we have around storm shelters. So one situation that we have here at Mills Lawn is that there are so many students, is that they need to pack really tightly in those hallways, which is not safe. And then in the high school, we have, we have our teachers that spoke about that. They have to choose a bed, they have to stand potentially in a basement, in flooded, in a flooded area, which is really unacceptable. It's not a safe place. But if we were doing a plan such as X-two, we would be able to solve this. We would improve ADA accessibility, and also, we've heard from the strategic planning process that there is a deep desire for preschool offering in this community, more than we have right now. We would have the space for that, and then the next would be to talk about how to implement that, but it would give us the space for it. There are more, you know, I've included a long letter on the agenda, and there are more points here, but those were the ones that really jumped to me at our core team facilities meeting last Friday, but since, you know. So I see a lot of potential for checking boxes that are important for different groups in the committee, and also for the big, for a big committee at large that agrees on some of the specific needs. So I'll keep it to that. I would say, I'm sorry, I'm adding one more thing, is that if we want to take, if we want to have a time to dive into X-two, I think we should talk about eliminating Plan, which I know we have tabled on today. And my suggestions here would be to eliminate C-one, C-three, and C-five because of the cost of it. I don't think that we can find a way to nickel and dime on those things. I would also, X-one, and Mike can maybe comment on that, but X-one was for brand-new, new three through twelve. I think this was designed just for administrative purposes, for the OFCC process, because this was not the plan that we had discussed on Friday. We had, from a get-go, we had looked at a demo reno add for high school. So this one, I don't think that this will check as many boxes as X-two does. I think that B-one, I recommend that it comes off the table. I don't think that this is a plan that this committee can bag. And I would say, in view of what we've learned last week about the lack of tax relief on the Plan A, because there is no OFCC money, I'm wondering if it's wise to take them off the table, because they would, they would create a tax burden on our constituents for thirty-seven years without relief on that. So that would be my recommendations, and I am looking forward to hearing what the rest of the board has to say on that.
Well, first of all, speaking about the X-plan, the biggest problem I see with it is the great strength of Mills Lawn, Mills Lawn School is the setting for children, and so that we would reduce the numbers of children that were actually going to this, to this building, to me, we'd lose some of the positive impact of having this beautiful setting for a school, that children can be out in that setting. Let's see. I, in terms of, well, there's a couple different things here. I mean, I started looking at the C-six as an alternative, if people in the community felt that they could afford it. That leaves, that means sixth grade goes up to Union Road. Yes?
I'm just gonna interrupt you. So the, just to stick to the agenda, we're introducing Plan X, there's one little thing about the roots, and then we're gonna, then we have to hit the plan elimination on the agenda, so.
Yes.
So do you have more comments on Plan X?
Okay. So that's, yeah, that would be my main concern about Plan X. Well, there's a couple of concerns. One, we're not fixing the whole building, and that sounds like a tradition we have here in the district of not really taking care of our building. I mean, we're, we talked about at the court, at the courtroom, that we would, I mean, I'm totally for us trying to get some energy, some energy program monies, that's, that's great, that's a way to defray some of the costs of the renovation here. But we were talking about cutting that number by half, and that concerns me, and I think it will concern the community, so that's another concern I have. The, you know, getting that little extra money, I mean, it's two million dollars, I guess, from, or no wait, it's a million dollars, you know, going to pre-K in order to maximize the monies we can get from the state, it's a great, it's a great thing to try to do, but you don't want to do it for a plan that you don't even really want, you know? So you want to, you know, we don't want to, so we want to make sure it's the plan that we want. So I think that's, yeah, I think that there will be concern on the fact that we're, so part of the building would remain empty. The way we were conceiving it is pre-K, which I think, we do want to think about pre-K in this building, and I think whatever, if we're able to think about that, I think we should try to do that. But we were, but to, we were talking about bringing the offices here, having pre-K through two here, and then having part of the building, the nineteen fifty-two, not fully renovated and empty. And then there was the thought of, okay, so what are you going to do with that space? And there's certainly possibilities for how that space could be used, but the idea that we're not fully, that we're not going to renovate it to the level of the A-one plan concerns me.
Yeah.
Did you approach me on that?
I did, yeah, so if we're not renovating that space, or if there's a personal, are there districts that have used any of like health clinics or?
So that was a little bit of the discussion. The discussion from last Friday was if the entire building system lawn would be renovated, I mean, your major systems, electrical, HVAC, et cetera. And then that portion could be renovated at the expense of the renter, which is typical. And so I'm trying to piece together comments, and we're concerned about money, I completely understand that. So here's a way for the districts to then get some offset. This complete plan was generated to get more back from the OFCC. So my head's spinning a little bit today, because I can't figure out, quite honestly, with all due respect, do we want to minimize taxpayer burden, or don't we? We want this and we don't want this, so that was why the plan was developed. But it, but we did have this discussion that part of the building could sit empty, and then, once the systems were renovated, other renovations could be done at the expense of the renter, and there could be a wide variety of folks who would occupy that space. I think for pre-K, while we don't want to add pre-K to a plan we don't want, this makes complete sense to me as an educator, and I'm going to even go so far as to call myself and my principals sitting up here educational experts. There are many districts that have early childhood centers, campuses, this is a beautiful environment for that. But go down the road a mile, and that is also a beautiful environment. I think sometimes we think that that is sitting out, it's like in the middle of a downtown area, and that site, in fact, is more positioned in the natural world than this site. So, I mean, we've got forty acres out there, so those children, grades three, four, five, and six, would not leave here to go there without access to the natural environment. That's when we push on our architect and say, hey, develop a plan for us where the inside and outside is seamless, so that we can really deliver our curriculum in the unique ways that brand us as Yellow Springs Schools. So, part of the building, back to your original question, would be not completely renovated, and then it would beg the question, why would we completely renovate a part of the building that would remain vacant, right? So I think, again, when I say compromise, I don't use that word lightly, I felt like it was a tremendous compromise, and it really ticked a lot of boxes, right? Sensitive to cost, I get that, trying to maximize any credit we get, really thinking about what's right in terms of academics for kids. Three, you know, we talked about five-twelve, six-twelve, three-twelve is as viable an option as any of those, because there is a real distinct break. You know, our third graders are tested on reading, because in K-two, they're learning how to read, and three-on, they are reading to learn. So I think it has some true benefits, you know, two experts sitting right across from me, so I don't want us bored, what I would ask you as you wrestle with this decision, is if you think about these things as we go through the POR, certainly ask questions of Mike, but ask them of my principals, who really have insight on this. Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's great, everybody, can I get your guys' opinion, like what's, I mean, obviously, this kid pulled out now, it's different, it changes the great configuration different than we talked about, so what does that do in your opinion?
So I think everything that I'm going to say, I might double on something that someone else has said, but it's really, the fact of the matter is, this three-twelve and a K-two is not only growth and developmentally appropriate, it is also a natural break for what happens every day in a school setting. So it allows that third through, you know, eighth grade to kind of have vertical alignment. Those teachers are in the same building. It doesn't mean that students will see eighth graders, but it does allow flexibility for the adults that are planning and making sure that we are supporting students in the right way to collaborate within the same building. So that vertical alignment is a big factor. The K, or the pre-K, K-two break at third grade also allows an intervention specialist to really focus on what is developmentally appropriate for K-two. So that would just be one intervention specialist. We do give the test at second grade for gifted, and then those services begin in third grade, so then third up would be providing services for students who are identified as gifted. If you heard Deb Maybra, one of the teachers at Mills Lawn speak earlier, she talked about the playground really fitting more of the younger students, but we don't really have a playground, or playground equipment that is appropriate for those older kids, third and up. There's a big jump in the height and maturity from second to third grade. We've talked about that, just the difference from second to third grade and maturity. So the playground is here, it's appropriate for kindergarten or preschool through second grade, third, fourth, fifth grade, there would be fourth and fifth graders to model for those third graders. And then what was already mentioned is it's an opportunity to really bring preschool in-house and provide that opportunity and those services to the families in the village.
I mean, you covered most of it, things, so I think it also provides us more flexibility in terms of staffing and how we're using our existing staff, maximizing them, so I think specifically Lori Sparanapp is a theater teacher, having, we realistically could have theater as a special selective down further into the elementary. So I don't know that it would go all the way down to third grade, but it could definitely start earlier than it starts now in seventh grade. If we did a five-twelve plan, six-twelve plan, it could start in sixth grade, it could start in fifth grade, but it could go lower. There's also, we talked a lot, myself with athletic director Jeff Irig, about the idea of youth sports. So youth sports, organized youth sports typically start in third grade, so like the idea of a more school-based youth soccer program, youth basketball program, having kind of all that in-house, supported by the facilities that are out there, and with an athletic director communicating with all the other athletic directors in the conference and broader conferences, there's opportunity there as well.
I got a follow-up question, is that okay?
Yeah, please.
So I know that you mentioned vertical alignment, which is something that I didn't know until I learned about it recently. Can we go through what it means for the average community member that may have understood what it is and why we need it in the future?
I think in the most general way to describe this, it's an opportunity for teachers to discuss the standards that they are teaching in one grade level, and how will that affect the next grade level? And it could also be, these are the strategies that are working for this grade level that's coming up, let me pass that on to you, so that you know that the students are either ready for this skill, or they might need this type of instructional strategy to meet the needs of all the students.
Also, and, so it's something that we do right now on two campuses, but it's segmented, right?
Well, so we do it, but it's, it has to be very formal and intentional to be able to schedule the time, because we have staffs working on two different schedules, so the ability, the flexibility to literally walk down the hall from a seventh grade math teacher to go talk to a sixth grade math teacher and say, hey, I'm getting ready to cover areas... and say, hey, I'm getting ready to cover areas, area of polygons. How deep did you get to this last year? Just a question like that where they can say, oh, we really mastered squares, rectangles, and triangles, but we didn't get as far with trapezoid. You know, so there's the more formal piece, but there's also just the day-to-day, being able to communicate, having access to those people.
And provide the I need collaborative spaces, right? Or like a teacher's front room, but it is large enough for everybody.
Right. And another.
It could be scheduled. I mean, if they are in the same building, that is something that could be scheduled every week, every other week. And at this point, if my, if our eighth grade teacher wants to talk to the sixth grade math teacher, that might happen three times a year versus weekly or every other week.
And with increasing gifted services over the last few years, we've had more students advance to just like content area advancement. And right now, we're at a spot where we don't have any sixth graders yet taking seventh grade math that they need to come up to the middle school building. But, I mean, that's something that we're really a year away from. So, I mean, typically, it's not real typical to advance kids below the third grade. But I think fourth, fifth, sixth grade, like it's not that uncommon. So being able to do that and not have a building break.
So if we were segmenting the campuses at a different level later in the elementary, if I get in the way of advancement in gifted programs, is that what you're saying?
So students who are accelerated?
Yeah.
Content accelerated?
Yes.
We have to start thinking then about how are we transporting these students? Or are the teachers coming down? How do we create a master schedule so that the students can come down to Mills Lawn to teach the sixth grader, seventh grader math or correct? And because services begin in the third grade, that would be, again, just kind of a natural break from second to third.
So if it's a little sooner named, you mentioned Laugh-a-Dog's meeting, something that stuck with me recently, that evening staff together, teachers who are teaching across, like math, say, together is hard in the few buildings where the bells are different and plenty of time they can meet. Would this solve some of that?
Yeah, absolutely. So this year is our first year of really having a, what I would call a formal district leadership team, which is comprised of the building leadership team of the buildings. And so right now, we need monthly, have to get subs for everybody, have to decide what space we're going to. But at our last ELT meeting, maybe two weeks ago, this notion came up as we were looking at our data, talking about how do we get better? How do we get better to support our children academically? And this notion of being able to talk and to plan how it's a challenge, given our setup now, and, you know, potential ways to make that better, so yeah.
I've spoken a lot, so I'm trying to keep it in, I'm wondering.
It's the answer to my question, I guess.
Those are most of my questions as well, if you have something else.
So about the 3-12, what I keep hearing is the opportunity for efficiencies in how we use our staff. Something that we haven't really spelled out, but I think Jack would touch on to it, is that we can combine strength of different teachers, especially in the specials, right? So we could combine, we have teachers that have a licensure in theater, but we have other teachers that are on this campus that have a licensure in choir, I think.
Music.
Music. And if we were to bring more grade levels onto one campus, then we could talk about projects where both of those teachers combine into a richer program. That's something that is very appealing, is how to make richer programs out of the talent that we have. I think that's very compelling.
So you heard the teachers talk about how we make do.
Yeah.
And again, what I would implore the board to think about is, don't think about how we can make do. Think about how we can do better. So this provides opportunity for us. Opportunity to think about kind of what we've traditionally done, give a nod to all of those things that work, and really be honest and open about things that maybe are no longer working or never worked as we intentioned from the beginning. And really shape who we are as the Old Spring Schools that aligns to our strategic plan. Is what we've been working on. And there are a lot of factors that come into this decision that you'll be making. But again, I want you to think about not just making do.
But optimizing.
But doing better. How do we optimize the situation that we're in now? Whether we're talking about financial credit, whether we're talking about building size, whether we're talking about opportunities for our children to be able to provide theater at third grade, fourth grade, fifth. That is honestly a game changer. To have my music professionals in one building, that's a game changer. So we have to think about, is that what we want? Can we pull that off? And again, I think sometimes school districts don't always get opportunity. But because of aging facilities, you know, like it or not, this opportunity is now here for us to decide. You know, are we going to grab it or are we going to make do?
I think.
Well, I was just going to say, I agree with you, Dr. Holden, about how we can do better and to take advantage of an opportunity that could, I think, also, as I'm hearing it, the board has heard me speak about, one of my primary concerns throughout these processes have been about the ability for the district to retain our amazing teachers. I was so moved by some of what we heard today that it's been, some of those teachers I had myself. Those are my teachers. And it honestly made me cry a little bit. So it's hard actually for me to speak after the teachers because I've been kind of moved today. I think that was, I want to thank them and I know that they have a lot of work to do. We took some time out of their professional day. But I think that one of the things that I'm sort of hearing that would also be a potential to not only attract and retain our amazing teachers, but also families in our district if we were able to offer an early education center that could possibly, as we've talked about in the strategic planning sessions, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about pre-K and what kind of, also just, I know if public pre-K had been offered to my family, that would have been a game changer, honestly, also economically as well as educationally for my child. And wow, I think that would set us apart in some ways for families who would want to come here. So that's an opportunity too that I'm just, I'm compelled by. I'm very compelled by that.
You remind me of a topic that I haven't touched on, which is special needs, special services, special education kids. I know that I had a preschooler that needed special services and I could not find in town a preschool that could cater to his special needs. It had to choose between reducing my income by letting go of my job so that I could take care of his special needs in town, knowing that I'm not trained for that. Or sending him to a preschool but cutting out his opportunities for services. Or sending him to a place that could give him the special services, but then not having the time that I needed to work. So game changer for my family too. Very important, and I know that we are far from being beyond once again. And I think it talks about kindergarten readiness, and I wanted to ask you about that. About how you think that the pre-K2 could help set up a district and the students in the district here?
So I'm going to start with the pre-K option. And as an administrator who has been in a building, a pre-K8 building for five years in my career, I can tell you that the preschool option does provide special ed services that you speak to. It also provides a consistent transition into that K2 grade span. And there was a big difference, and I wish there were some statistics that I could say right now, but there was a big difference in the students that attended the preschool in my building and the students who did not attend preschool or attended preschool elsewhere. Because we had a waiting list. And when I say we had a waiting list, I had a mother call me before her daughter was even one year old to get on the waiting list for a four-year-old preschool. So I can tell you that there is a big difference in behavior. I can tell you there was a big difference academically. Socially, it just overall was beneficial to have preschool in the building where they would be attending kindergarten and just make it that true, smooth transition.
Can I just clarify for the record as well? There's no intention of us entertaining preschool below age four. Because there are some agencies in town that do a wonderful job with that. So we're not talking about infant to, you know, age three. So there's, we're mindful of that, and I just want people to understand.
Yeah, it wasn't my next thing to point out, it would be four years old on. And from recently having used both entities in town, I mean, I just remember the waitlist. And I imagine that it must be the same right now. And I, of course, it would warrant discussion with those various institutions, but I think that there is truly a need in this town for a coming preschool for four-years-olds. Sorry, I had more questions, of course. I wanted to ask you then about special education for 3-12. Do you see benefits in ways to optimize the programs that we use? Does it matter where to bring them together, to bring the 3-12 on together?
Yes. Oh, I would say yes.
Yeah.
I would say, yes, there is, because the strategies differ. So as the children mature and the students get older and their physical size gets bigger, there are just different things that they need. And then you also have to look at caseloads. So if you have more grade levels in a building, then you increase your opportunity to switch caseloads and make those, you know, as students are identified throughout the year. Then, you know what? If one intervention specialist has too many students on their caseload, then you have more flexibility to change those caseloads for the teachers and then ultimately give students a better opportunity to have those services and have access to those intervention specialists.
Here's an example for that. So, and most of our intervention specialists are cross-category, which means they serve most students identified with disabilities. So let's say grade six, for example, for discussion. We had two kids in a grade seven. And in grade five, we had 15 or 18. So we can then reimagine that caseload because what the law says is that we can't have more than a five-year age gap. And that's chronological age gap. So, so when I say caseload, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying these children are all going to be in the same class. But they are going to be managed by one intervention specialist who now will have a much more manageable caseload because this IS can serve students from grade five through seven as long as on the caseload, there's not more than five years of age difference difference. That's real flexibility because sometimes you get stuck, right? You just don't have enough people, you know, when you're not, when you don't have that big of a grade span to do that age break. If that makes sense.
I think I follow it, and I think it makes sense. It's about better distributing the load, which will increase the quality of our services and the opportunity for the kids.
And the flexibility to do that from year to year to year without an employee moving from building to building. So like, we have that flexibility right now where we have an intervention specialist that sometimes works just at the middle school, sometimes just at the high school, sometimes part middle school, part high school. But we don't have any ability for our middle and intervention specialists to help with sixth grade and like on down. So because caseloads vary from class to class to class, you lose that flexibility. So typically, students are identified mostly probably first, second, and third grade. And then it remains relatively consistent throughout school. We may add a student here and there, take a student off here and there. But the ability for that staff member to follow a bubble from grade level to grade level to grade level without having to change buildings would help.
So that's actually about the next topic is bubble classes. We would be more likely to handle those. And maybe that's a discussion for a POR here, right? Is that if we have, I think right now there are three classes of fifth grade, is that what they use currently?
Second grade. So we currently have three classes of second grade and we have three classes of this.
Yeah, so those, they will move on. But if we bring the 3-12 together, then we're most, more likely to have a classroom that could be dedicated to handle those bubbles in a way, instead of repeating them in each building if we were breaking, if we were breaking the grade differently. So we could be more efficient maybe in classrooms, as I'm following around. And maybe that's a discussion for a POR, I guess. Okay. And then my next question was actually for Jay. So I did not know, but spaces to rent, commercial spaces to rent could be renovated at the cost of a renter? Is that what, is that what you mean?
So it's very typical, like Terry said, that, yeah, when you have a space to rent, that a lot of times it's not in a condition that the occupant wants it to be in. But it is usually the responsibility of the occupant to make those improvements to the rented space. So, I mean, this goes for a lot of space around town that's already rented, you know? Like the river and the t-shirt shop, I'm sure it was not set up to be a t-shirt shop when they rented. So they put the equipment, they made some of the improvements to do that. When I was at Review, we had a board office, and we only did half the space of the building we were in. The other half of the building was in unfinished state. It was a concrete floor and it was big and wide open. And you could see the beams and stuff, there was no drywall, there was nothing. And we got a renter into that space, and they finished the space at their cost and then still paid us a monthly rent. Now, I will say sometimes, you know, there's adjustments made to contracts because if you're renting a fully finished space or a fully furnished space, yeah, of course, it's going to be more than something that the renter has to go in and make improvements for. But that was done where, yes, completely unfinished space and the renter finishes the space to meet their needs because you don't always know who's going to rent your space and what they're going to use it for.
So they can customize it for their needs. But, and I guess the discussion would be for us about what level of basic renovations we bring to that space to make it rentable and what kind of income that could yield and what we would do with that income. One question that I had is that, could it go into our maintenance fund? Could we dedicate, if we rented a part of the school, so the facilities, could we use that income to offset some of the maintenance that we need to do in our schools?
Yeah, there's a lot of options about how you fund in an OFCC project, how you fund that O34 requirement. But even just as a district, you do have options to set aside general fund money for other purposes. It's a board decision. There's different requirements on where you can move it and how long you can keep it there without spending it or building it up. But that is certainly something that that income could be looked at for.
But it could supplement our PI, things like that?
Yes.
Okay, wow. And then the discussion would be for us to determine what kind of level of basic renovations we want to bring to suppose, to a part of the school that wouldn't be, to a part of the facility that wouldn't be used anymore as a school. And I think, Dr. Holden, you mentioned the mechanics, electric, plumbing, the envelope, I assume.
Well, I'm not an architect, but I don't know why we would do all of that when we were doing it.
Yeah. Okay, and then the question for Mike would be how to use an energy project to help us offset the renovations of a part of a building that would be not used anymore as a school? Would we do that?
I think you would use the energy project towards the entire Mills Lawn energy improvement.
Yeah.
Be a whole thing.
Okay.
And I'm understanding an energy program is you're, you're taking a loan against the savings that are predicted by an engineer who predicted saves.
Correct. Yeah, it's not free money. It's, you're essentially paying back a loan off of future energy savings.
So you don't have to come up with that money at a time?
Correct.
All right, anything else on Plan X?
I have, there was one more topic that I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just had a whole week to think about it. So there you go. I think if that was something that we were moving with, it would allow the board then to have a discussion with a committee about how to make the green space a permanent green space. But, and I would want to ask a question. Could we look at a scenario where the school is no longer responsible for this green space and that is truly dedicated a green space for the community? And I think that's a plan that allows us for that because if we have less kids in this building, potentially we would need lesser green space for the school to maintain themselves with the option of using a community park if it's next door. But maybe we could, it would allow us to have a conversation about how to turn this into a community park that is no longer on the shoulders of a school to scale.
And as the board thinks about that, and I think it's a great idea, on advice of legal counsel.
Yes.
They are saying these are things that you can do. However, they caution the board to just follow the process, okay? That it's spelled out by law. But certainly something is doable and worthwhile.
Anything else on Plan X? All right, so moving on to 2.4, actual 2.4. Let's get that, you know, remaining cases.
Yeah, so, and I'm going to just go ahead and move on because I'm going to quickly go to 2.5. But 2.4 is important to talk about. I sent some email updates. Microphone for the people. I sent some updates about mostly the facade of the gymnasium. This is in lines with our conversations about roofing. And we were looking at possibly going two roofs. And then, you know, we had the question about the cracks in the gym. We had a structural engineer out to take a look at that. I don't believe that there is anything and I am not, I've been at a conference. I have not seen an email from him come in. But there's nothing that is structurally terrifying about the cracks in the gym. They are facade issues. But these facade issues are also part of our water problem as far as leaks go. And I guess if any of you have any old cars or something, it's kind of the same way that you address an old leaky engine. It's better to go from the top down because if you, for example, if we did the two roofs that I suggested earlier, we did the, we know that these are our two problem roofs, the gymnasium and the one to the east of that above the theater classroom. If we do the roofs and not the gym facade, we could still have a lot of water issues because there are a lot of facade issues and we know that water can get in there. So while I would like to be able to do both roofs, I am now getting quotes for doing the facade of the gym as well. And then if we did the roof and the facade, we would at least know that those two are good, the gymnasium's good. If there's leaks elsewhere, then.
So the gym roof, not the second section?
The gym roof and the gym facade. Yes, there is a fair number of facade issues. It also, it's likely that the facade would be more within our price range than that second roof. So I'm getting some quotes on that. But that is the reason that I don't have a contract today for the roofs is because they're coming out to take a look at our facade and see what they could do and how they could get that under our budget. So this really leads into the next part of the discussion. I can't really eliminate some of the plans unless, you know, without having, or I can't really do the roofs unless we have a decision that eliminates some of those plans. So this sort of pumps us. I would like to do the roof as soon as possible or I'd like to do the facade as soon as possible. And this is the reason behind some of my plan elimination strategies. So I can move into.
Sure, three hours in and we're at the hardest part of the meeting.
We're at the fun part.
Do you need a little talk there or are you good with this?
Um, I don't know. I, can you guys see?
Yeah.
So yes, if you'll go ahead and add a roof. So I am going to touch on sort of the reason why these plans expand like they do.
Should we bring the microphone so that?
Oh, I'll grab them. Okay, so I know you saw the 10 plans, but I'm going to try to get us this on. Okay, so we have the 10 plans, but I'm going to try to give an explanation of why I think we should be down to these four. And then if there's any disagreement on that, we will go back. But this way, we're not putting 10 plans to the rubric. Okay, so the narrowing considerations that I have to get us down to those four plans. Options C1, C3, and C5 are out of the price range. So we want to be in maximum bond and it's above 1% income tax. I don't feel like those are viable options that we want to keep on the table. Yeah. And so everybody that has your hand out, you have the 10 plans on one side, you have the four plans on the other. I'm suggesting we get down to those four plans. There's a back. It's meant to make it. Yeah, the 10 plans gets us a little bit much and a little bit confusing. And on the backside is just the four that I think are viable. B1 and X1 include completely new builds at East Enin Road and they don't take advantage of the most cost-effective square footage that can be salvaged in an OFCC project. Additionally, while there's completely new builds on the table, I can't address the roof and the facade of the gym. So if we can, if we're in agreement to take those off, then we can move forward with the roof and the facade plan. And then option A2 is the total renovation package. I have not heard a lot of proponents of that lately. Also, when you look at it on that cost comparison, it comes in at a total cost that is higher than B1 or B2. So if you could, if you're going to fully renovate your buildings, you could also have a brand-new building for essentially the same cost. That's probably the one that I'm making the biggest assumption on. But if that's something that the board is in agreement on here today, I would say it would help to, help us focus on the plans that we have remaining. And then some of this process that we're going through. I know as the community follows along, sometimes they're like, okay, you were at six plans. Now you're back to 10. How did you do that? So we're narrowing and then we expand it. We're expanding because everybody liked the C options and then we saw the price and we go, oh, no, that's not good. So we started working on those C options and figuring out how do we, how do we make this into a plan that's within our budget? That's where you see, we did the, we didn't sort of go on five, 12. We're like, okay, let's do, let's look at it at a six, 12. Then we came up with the other idea. If we add more to that OFCC-funded project, and that's how we came to the Plan X. And then sort of the, Dorothy pointed this out earlier, but one of the issues with the planned expansion is that every time we do an OFCC portion of a project, we're duplicating it because they're going to make us run it as a new build and the demo rental hat. So it's just sort of a requirement of the OFCC process that you look at it as a cost of a new one and the cost of the demo rental hat option that we have. So every time we think of one idea, we end up with two new options. So this was my attempt to simplify, quicken this narrowing process that we're trying to do today. If any board member thinks that the plans I'm suggesting should go back on into consideration, not going to be offended, I certainly understand that. But my recommendation is that we focus on A1, B2, X2, and C6.
Okay, I was going to say, since we're, I would like to propose that we use Robert's Rules to make this decision and I would like to make a motion that we narrow to A1, B2, X2, and C6.
So we cannot vote today. This is a work session. Now, our options, we're just working. So we're allowed to, you're allowed to give us the guidance and say, yeah, we're all in agreement to take these options off the table. So it's not something we vote on. And we didn't vote on the other ones. So we don't have to vote, we just need the guidance.
I guess I would just like in the future that we make these decisions by Robert's Rules because they are decision-making in my book.
Well, it's not, it's not actually what you have to do.
Yeah, it's just, we just need the guidance. You say, you say these plans, we're in agreement, then we can do it. But we cannot actually vote on it today as a work session.
I'd like to make a suggestion.
Yeah, I'd love to.
That we use the technique that we learned in our retreat about just maybe the thumbs up, the thumbs to a side like neutral versus like a thumbs down like, you know, a blocking as we're doing the elimination of the plans. Because I think that's a pretty valuable tool that we could use. That's not, I don't know if you would accept that, you know?
I just think when we're making decisions like this, we should call them what they are, but. And if people are in agreement with this, that's fine.
It is just guidance and it is work and we are here in a work session, so.
But we haven't made any official decision that we're taking the others off, we're just.
I mean, we are. You're allowed to look at as many plans as you want. You're allowed to expand, you're allowed to contract. It is not something that is required to be voted on like some of the things that we do have, like contracts that we have to vote on. So it is just where we just, yeah.
Decision that is a vote is the one.
Putting a bell.
Whatever, right. This would be like, whether it's facilities or anything else, as you're reading through lots of data, how do you narrow that? That's really what this is because this is becoming untenable, managing all of this.
And then as we're considering these plans, we're going to do a couple other things and then we'll go and we'll go through that decision-making process on officially giving us guidance to eliminate any of the options. But this addresses something that came up earlier from a community member. How does, oh, is Eric here? Eric, I've lost my screen. I don't know, I don't know what I, I'm not tech savvy. I broke it.
It's not a film.
But we are restricted with income tax at 0.25 increments. And as we look at these plans, I also have some of the information from last week's presentation that shows our maximum borrowing amount within those. Yeah, so, here we go. So we can go up to 37, we can go up to 44, we can go up to 50.9, we can go up to 57.7. But what do you do when a project is 53? You know, okay, you have to have that 1%. What we do is we dial in the bond millage then. So I have this out here for, on some of the X2s and was able to show what the dialed-in bond millage would be. There was an adjustment yesterday to the X2 amount. So my information is now incorrect. But I also shared some of the concerns about, it was, we came up with this on a Friday. It was a great idea. We were trying to vet through it. This is why there's adjustments still going on. All these plans are working. But I had some of the same concerns about just 50% because we were talking about doing all of the HVAC and all of the roofs for the portion that would be, the portion of Mills Lawn that would be left unused. So I also, instead of using half, I used two-thirds because I looked at sort of the square footage that we're talking about still occupying. It's like a third of the building. Basically, the K2 wing was kind of the, the now K2 wing was kind of the proposed. This is the area we would leave mostly unaddressed. And there wouldn't be students in there afterwards, but that was the portion we were cutting out. So I did it, I ran it at two-thirds and looked at what would the bond millage there be there. So this is, oh, you can't see that at all? It is on the agenda. And then in board docs, you can see these bond millage documents. But what happens when you, okay, we, total, the highest bond millage we can do is at 30.3 million. But what if you do a bond for 28.29? Then it's not 9.13 mils, it's 8.51. So you're able to dial in your bond millage if you're in one of those gaps. So that's how that works so that we're not overtaxing more than we need. We look at where we are within those gaps and we go, okay, well, we know we need 1% or we need 0.75% income tax for this, but we don't need all of it. Then we just lower the bond millage. That's, that's the most effective way to do it. That is the millage that would probably, you know, that's what we're going to do when we vote on that millage to go on the ballot, is dial in the bond millage to the most effective amount.
Can I ask a clarifying question? It's something that's a lot of products too, but I think it just needs to be clarified. Let's put this one. When we get an OFC, if we do an OFCC project and there's an OFCC state rebate that comes back, it has to go on an OFCC project.
It has to go back to an OFCC project.
No, there was confusion about that and I understand where it came from.
I'm trying to get the, yes.
We tried to be as transparent as possible. And then as we're going through this process, you hire a bond attorney, you go through that and they said, look, this is, this is where this has to go.
Yeah, there's also different options on how you do an OFCC master plan. Our master plan includes one building. So there's a lot of schools out there that their master plan might include 15, 20 buildings. I mean, obviously, we are not that size. But an OFCC refund or payback would have to go to another OFCC project. If we only have one OFCC project, it can only go to the project that we have. So there is no option to use it elsewhere because we have no other OFCC projects to be addressed. So the money that we borrow for the OFCC project would be paid down with the OFCC money that comes back.
And that goes into your discussion from last meeting to both of how you structure the millage based on the one that's coming off.
Yes. Yeah, so we would.
And when you get the money back, you would reduce millage if you're doing an OFCC project.
Yeah, if you're doing an OFCC project. So again, millage maximum 9.13 right now. But depending on the option, depending on the cost of the project, millage could be lower. Now, I will say the 40% estimated reduction, that's estimated at something where we would need the full 9.13 mils. So if you take 40% of 8.5, it's less than 3.75 now. Less than 3.75 mils because it's. So, if you take 40% of 8.5, it's less than 3.75 now, less than 3.75 mils, because it's gonna be approximately 40%. So, some of these projects that require a little bit less millage upfront, maybe there's a slightly smaller reduction, but that's because you started with a slightly smaller amount to begin with. Does that, does everybody following me on that?
Wait, so that means that for this scenario, we could go down to five after reimbursement?
Yeah, so like, I, you know, it's, there's a lot of factors there, but this one may not, because it's 8.5 mil, it's not the full 9.13. When we get the rebate, it may not be a reduction of 3.75 because 40% of 8.5 is not 3.75. So.
But, yeah, but here it would be 3.1.
So, this highlights the complexity of this. When you're trying to do it at home, and I realize everybody is excited, like they wanna know, what is it gonna cost me? I get that. When you're trying to do it at home, these are the kind of things that you're weighing, so please be patient with us, I think that's part of the process, we're trying to do it right here.
Yeah, I'm trying to give the best information based on the information that I have. So, you know, you see the, there's also a link to a lower dollar amount here that was using Mike's number prior to yesterday. If you borrow 25.99 million on a bond, so that's less than the 28 million, that's 7.82 mils. Now, his numbers, he went through his POR, he's double-checked and he's like, okay, it's more than this, so now I know this is too low for the current budget. This is where we're working to dial stuff in.
This is another reason why we have to, we have to narrow these things, because probably what the public is not seeing is all the work, it's not done by Jay and I, but by outside bond council and capital management to do these numbers. So, it just, it isn't like you can flip a switch and say, well, here are the numbers. So, it's hard to manage all of these 10 scenarios.
Yeah, the more scenarios you have on the table, well, we know that the Cs that I suggested are above what we wanna ask, but, you know, all of those, some of them fit really well, they're right at one of those levels where, okay, this much bond millage, maximum bond millage, and this much income tax. But the ones that fall in that gap, if you have six plans falling in that gap, then I'm gonna have six different bond millages that I'm gonna.
It's super confusing.
It's super confusing, everybody's like, well, why are they all different bond millages? Well, because they're all different dollar amounts. So, you know, I can say maximum, right now, we're looking at 9.13 mils with, at that level, a 3.75 reduction after OFCC payback on those projects. And then, if projects fall between, then the original millage will be less. It also means your payback will be a little bit less, but then again, we weren't going up to the whole 9.13. So, it's just, you know, you gotta consider it's proportionate always. I think this covers everything unless anybody has any questions for me and if the board has any questions. Otherwise, I would suggest that we do the elimination exercise and go from there.
I mean, I think, I have a question for Mike. If we're, whatever we do on Mills Lawn, I think we need to do the envelope work, you know, thinking about the 1952 wings, this window in particular here, but also, you know, the third quarter, and can that be done on a 2/3 budget? I mean, you know, that, I guess that's my question.
Yes. Yeah, roofing, the shell, dressing the shell and systems.
Yeah, because we don't allow we go with those whole windows.
Shell and systems, yes.
Trying to rent with somebody, that's something I have to work out.
The other thing I wanted to say was, in terms of the A1 as an option, I think we need to reweigh the amount of monies that would go through the bond and the amount of monies towards income tax. The main kind of folks I'm concerned about, I mean, that high bond, which is not gonna come down on an A1, and the people it's gonna most negatively impact is the, you know, older person who hasn't been able to downsize because there's no place else in town to go. Basically, there's not the housing options in the community, they wanna stay in the community, and they've got some large and rather expensive house that they're paying taxes on. So, I would like to see us weigh the A1, you know, add .5 on income tax and bring down the bond.
So, I would be able to do that, so like, right, yeah, you could do, you know, you know that right now it's at .25% income tax, you can say, okay, what does A1 look like if we do a .5 income tax? And then, obviously, just like I was saying, where you dial in on the other projects that are in between, same with if you go over on the income tax, you know, necessity means you can dial in the bond horn.
Yeah, it's for my, I was thinking about the Plan X. In that case, I think we'd X2, yeah, with demo rental. If, if we are agreeing on using only 2/3 of a building as a school, then that means that maybe instead of, instead of building a new secure vestibule, we could use the lobby that we have to make it secure. Of course, that would, that would require some drawings, I guess, some renderings on Mills Lawn. Is that something that we could have, so that we better understand what Plan X would look like on Mills Lawn and whether or not we need to add a new vestibule, whether or not we can retrofit it into the floor plan that we have?
So, on a secure vestibule, all the A1 plans actually had a secure vestibule happen inside the current lobby, we weren't planning on any additions. So, I'm confident that the Mills Lawn early warning center secure vestibule could happen still within the space and would not require an addition.
So, you have put like about a million dollar budget in A1 for that? Does it mean that they?
What was also happening was a massive expansion of the administrative space. We were taking over, there's a space, and if, if that doesn't all need to happen, that area of their, that renovation scope could be smaller.
So, what you mean is that inside that one million dollar, there was some work that was gonna happen in the 1952 wing, but maybe we can deduce, I imagine that you're now talking about the administrative offices and just the other side of this, because we would still need them if we had.
Which you wouldn't need all of them.
We what?
You wouldn't need all of the offices for a pre-K2 that you would for.
Yeah, but what about the board offices that we would include then? Or is it, or is it something that we need to look at in terms of, is it worth it with the money?
Yeah, yeah, so this is where, I guess I'm gonna suggest that we go through our elimination process.
Yes, yes, sorry.
So that we can talk about what plans do we need to dial in better.
Because those are the kind of questions that we would need to explore.
Right, we can explore the plans remaining better by, wait, I made that. So, I'm gonna start with the, we can do the thumbs up on exercise, I'm gonna start with the, I guess I would say the low hanging.
Lights on or off?
Yeah.
How do people feel about this in the dark?
Lights on?
Yeah.
I'm happy you started with Jay's suggestions. If that doesn't go, we could go through one by one, already down the list, but I'm actually quite happy with your suggestion of which plans.
So, let's try a round of all of those four, all of those I could suggest.
Do we agree with Jay's suggestion?
Okay, so, or is everybody good with cutting down to my suggested list of plans that we, that we work on today? Which would be A1, B2, X2, and C6. Item. Look at that!
Okay.
Woo! From 10 to 4 in one vote. So.
I love it. Boom!
So, I would say, now that we have that direction, that helps me as far as, okay, now I can do the gym roof and the gym facade and I will work on getting something. Now, I don't, we need to have a vote, we talked about this, we might have to add a little, a short board meeting that would just be voting on a contract to address the roof and the facade. The roofing costs will go up if we do not make a decision by May, it will also be difficult to get it done this summer if we don't make a decision by May.
By May what?
May 1st.
And?
May 1st.
May 1st.
Okay.
So, I will, like I said, I will press to get the facade numbers and then get a contract on the roof and facade. If that is also agreed, that's, that's the way we wanna go, top-down, do the roof and facade, and then we will address the lower roofs, hopefully with a big project.
I like it.
Okay.
And just like the season overall, but as far as, I know, again, there's been a lot of chat in the community about how do we get to 10? I think at this point, you can't argue that we haven't left every stone unturned. We've gone through every iteration, everything possible, and we're really trying to consider all the options. And once more, caution you on the finance piece, which is Jay's job, you're seeing how complex it is, and so, we'll get as much fidelity as we can when we can get it. And there's no holding back, I know we're just trying to work through all this stuff and this is why it takes so long, so appreciate the patience. That's all I have.
So, that's 2.5, right?
Well, and I guess I would say, does anybody have a recommendation to get rid of any more plans? Does anybody wanna take any more plans off the table now or are we good with working on these four?
I think so, Jamie, so if not, we shouldn't be narrowing it for today.
Not yet.
I think what we have, we've got A1, right, we've got a B option and the C and the X are both hybrids, so you really have all three options, okay, but we've narrowed down what their focuses are. Like, it's pretty clear.
I have a question. I think the next thing is P O R. Okay, before we go that, I need some clarification about what steps are we putting in place to explore the plans that are pretty new to us in terms of.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, my question is, what are the next steps for this board to explore, I think C6 and X more in depth? Because I think if we explore A1 and B2 well, well enough to make a decision on that. But how do we wanna do this? Do we want, how do we wanna do this? Because we have a limited timeline for this and I would want to make sure that we give maybe a list of questions to Mike as soon as possible so that.
I was gonna say, I'm wondering if we should have another opportunity for the public to weigh in on these options, to explain in a little more detail and to hear from the Because we just, when we, once we find out costs, we really haven't had an opportunity. We had the one opportunity and now we're kinda narrowing down and I think it might be nice to be able to hear from the public again.
But those are not maybe mutually exclusive, we could have.
No, no, I'm not saying, yeah, absolutely not.
So.
It's just another consideration.
So, if we need to schedule a next meeting before May 1st, and I think we had penciled in something next week.
Do we?
Yes, 22, 28.
27, 28?
I thought it was a 29, but whatever.
Whatever.
Was that?
So, how, what is our process so that we can bring more refined information to the next meeting about the Plan X and the Plan C?
So, I guess I just wanna say, I'm trying to understand, the difference really in my eyes from my seat is that it's either K5, 612, or pre-K2, 312. It's really about the academic piece, I mean, the money piece, it's not, that is what it is. Am I missing something about the difference in these plans?
No, 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 it's not about the difference between the two plans, it's about the questions, the remaining questions we have about Plan X. But we've, some of the community members have presented and some of them have just gone through and left unanswered for now, so.
For, can you give me an example?
I would want, you know, I have questions to know, out of that 159,000 square feet that we have for Plan X, I wanna know how much of that would be used for schools and how much of that would be left out to be for community use. It would be something that I would weigh in to determine the maintenance of what is a school and the maintenance of what is, could be rented out. There are some other questions that right now escaped me, but I had that question, but I wanted to pursue for Plan X so that we can make a better decision.
And I think the discussion today about what that Plan X does academically needs to be said to a larger group of community members, which is why I think it's.
Or parents.
Well, there are community members too, hopefully, the district community. But yeah, just to explain, you know, some of the benefits, I think people, I mean, it's something totally new that we're talking about and I think it was very interesting to hear from Terry and our principals, you know, the possible benefits, and I think it would be, there needs to be a place where that can be heard and then responded to. So, in light of that, and I apologize, I'm only asking because I'm out again, and if this is a presentation I need my principals to create, I want them to be aware of that so that they can be prepared to answer community questions about 312 and the academic needs or the academic advantages of that. So, I'm just asking so that I can, you know, time is, we're trying to run school as well as do this, so I just wanna give them as much lead time as I can to be able to think about this.
So, you asked me to throw something up on the calendar and try to get a.
Yeah, I mean, if this is, you know, particularly if it's a meeting, which is okay, when I'm absent, they need to, they're gonna need to do the lift and I trust them to do the lift, but I do wanna give them some advance news so that they can prepare.
So, ahead of the rubric, what happened next week?
Correct.
Was just, was it?
I'm out Monday through Thursday and Jack is with me.
Okay. So, it's a Friday.
Friday.
So, I guess, back to Dorothy's suggestion of a schedule, perhaps I could, you know, we could, the board members could all take a little homework here. We, you could do a rubric for each of them and bring your rubrics back, you know, or I don't know if we wanna go through the rubrics on all the plans that we have right now, or we could.
For the next meeting, you're back in the.
Yeah, you could, you could do the rubric and have it prepared for each of the remaining plans coming back. And then, maybe also have your list of the most concerning issues you have about each plan and you could bring those to the next meeting and say, this is why this plan really bothers me, or this is, this is why this plan is something that I don't think I can support. And then, to, we will be able to take those concerns and dial in the most viable plans. So, if somebody says, you know, I'm not gonna be able to support this because of this, well, then, maybe between that time and between the decision in May.
May 22nd.
May 22nd, we would be able to come up with an answer to the most concerning issues that people have about the different plans. And also, maybe next week, we'd be able to look at those rubrics and say, okay, we can eliminate a couple more plans today, hopefully we'll have A back as well, and everybody would be able to do that. So, that's my suggestion for getting something in process, because I don't think, with Terry out, that we'll be able to refine our plans more before next week. But we can all come back with the concerning items on the plans remaining and then also rate it by rubric by each of you so that you can say, okay, and maybe use those rubrics that help narrow further next week.
And talk again about the educational benefits.
I mean, we can be prepared, we just know when it is. And again, if it meets the schedule of the board that it's Monday through Thursday, then the three of us will work on it and make it as competent to present it.
We've got four of us here right now, let's see if we can fix the timing and we'll see if the schedule allows. I think it's probably, is everybody free on Friday to 28th so we can have Jack?
I will need the meeting to be at around 5:00 or.
Okay. That would also help me, so.
Yeah, so there is my momia at night, just wanna point that out.
There's a what?
There is my momia at 7:00. I could be available at 5:00 or early in the afternoon. Yeah.
Okay, so 5 o'clock next Friday.
Let's, let's, I'll give A and C, see what you make of it, and we'll adjust by a little later.
Okay.
And it will be here or at the high school?
Whatever is most convenient for the educators that need to be at this meeting is my suggestion.
Whatever is most convenient for the education that need to be at this meeting, is my suggestion.
We have a dance on Friday here, so...
So...
The gym will come.
Not here?
That is correct.
The Albus Springs High School, Media Center?
Yep. Okay. Okay. Just a little, so let's go to two-point-six, which is POR.
I don't think this makes sense.
No, after we've gone. So is there anything you wanna add, Mike, or anything we should do?
And I just wanna say I agree with Terry. I think that where the board is at now is a planning decision on the great configuration. Dialing in the POR, which dials in the LFI square footage, is a task that I think is specific to the plan configuration issues. For example, do we have one gym in a new building or two? Well, if I put my planning hat on that, if that was a six-twelve or a three-twelve, I might have a different opinion on that, right? So I think we, I would recommend we make the planning decision, and then we customize that POR to that. Because there are ways to look at that POR very differently, depending on what the plan configuration is.
What is the deadline? Because the POR is something that we need to approve so that we can...
The importance of the POR is not for the A1 plans, but it's only for the, it's only for the estate plans. And it's important because it determines the LFI square footage, which determines your budget, which determines your millage. So that's why...
So by when do we need to have a POR square footage so that we're on track?
You need to know so that you know what, if you're gonna make a decision to put something on the ballot, to put on the ballot. This is a case where I might say it's really important to trust the experts that you employ, which is why we've been working with Mike on this. And so, you know, we did it that one work set, I can't remember when, when we were at the high school, we kinda went through it. So it's in brackets, we determine how much, how many classrooms we need, and, you know, we can try and do that again, so that when the board meets next, you know, we can have it narrowed down, but it's really not...
It's not a board, it's not so much of a...
Well, I'm not saying it's not, it's not, the board can't weigh in on it, but it would be, I would be asking you, board number of K, how many elementary classrooms do we need? And you would say, I have, or you should, you know, say, I have no idea, that's why I employ administrators and a superintendent. So, so that's kind of the lens that we use. So you have the POR. I think what might be helpful is in addition to the rubric piece, if you go through it, and I, and I might look at, I don't know which ones to look at, I guess whatever plan should look best, look at that one, and you can see how many spaces there are for that, and if you have questions asked, that way at least you're kind of understanding how the pieces fit together. And one thing I will say, and Mike can clarify as well, you have the POR on the top, so like three-twelve, for example. The LFIs for that, based on this, are for ninety-two-hundred square feet. So that's one way to differentiate them. So you see, right? Is this still the right number?
Plus the car down. Generally, I...
Don't confuse us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. And then you can take the K-12 one, and you see that it's almost twenty-one thousand square feet. And then you can see the six-twelve one where it's thirty-two-hundred. So I would ignore the five-twelve one because that's no longer on the list of four. Am I making sense?
Yeah, yeah, you are. It's clarifying. I thought that, I thought wrong, and I'm glad that you clarified that.
Right, and it's sectioned, so if there's a section that's of particular interest to you, for example, you could look at the special ed section, you could look at the regular kind of academic program section, there's a whole dining section. Some of those are pre-populated, but if you have questions, it would be great to look at this and then write your questions down, because I think Mike can, you know, very quickly and easily answer those questions.
So about the three-to-twelve and the six-to-twelve, is that, Mike, did you do those ones, or were you the principals and the superintendent people to look at those?
So we, I did those, and my recommendation is, is let's say there's consensus around Plan X. I would recommend at our next core team meeting that we do a deep dive on the POR on Plan X for the three-twelve, just to sort of hold back again on that.
That's okay. I think that was the key that I was looking for.
Yes.
It makes a lot more sense now.
Terry should be here next Friday. And it's every other week.
And if it's okay if I just make a little editorial comment, there's a lot of exciting opportunities you have that are kind of swirling around my brain that you won't see in the POR. And let me just explain one of them. So let's say you did the three-twelve, and we went with two gyms at the high school. The problem with your existing gym is it's too big for an elementary gym, it's too small for your high school gym, right? So maybe that option, we do a new varsity gym at ninety-three-hundred square feet and take your existing gymnasium, and this is something we just did recently. Imagine this is your high school gym, and we put a soundproof wall down the middle, kept the elementary gym on one side, put the band room on the other, kept your stage and did retractable theater seating up against the wall. So now all of a sudden, you've got a theater in your POR that you don't know you have. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's all kinds of, like, levels of, you know, because there's a lot of folks who say, what about theater space, what about theater space? I don't see it in the POR.
Yes.
It might be in the POR, just depending on how we skin the gap.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, what they were saying earlier, trust your experts as far as the POR goes. The decisions on the POR, the majority of them are educational requirements, but the influence that the board will have on the decision-making process on the POR is the LFI spaces, the auditoriums, the second gymnasium. These are the types of decisions that, you know, we could say, okay, this is what we have, we can be honest and say, like, we haven't included an auditorium until the board says this is what we wanna do. But also, it is a little bit difficult, because that's part of the planning process, you know? He's talking about it's not in the POR, but when we go through that planning design process after a project is put in on and approved, this is how you can address it. It is hard to, especially with the demo Reno app, we're stuck with some of the spaces that we have. So, you know, right now, he has all of our classrooms at eight, ten, some of those existing classrooms must be a different size. So it's in the POR, it says eight, ten, but we know in reality it's gonna be a little bit different, but it's kind of a little bit further down the road in that planning process.
Right, but I do think what I'm hearing is there's some flexibility within some of these plans to imagine things that like a person like Mike can imagine, because he's an architect who's worked at so many schools, right? And so if the core team is talking about some of those things, I do think, and what I'm hearing you say is, if the plans have some flexibility, that gives the board in the future, potentially with that plan, some options in the decision-making around what those spaces, how they could be configured. So that's exciting to me, that there's some flexibility and options, and I think we will rely on you, Mike, to have some of that vision around what that could look like.
I was gonna say, we should be happily happy that we're stuck with what we have, because we're actually seeing opportunities there that we wouldn't...
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, the POR is gonna say eight-hundred-and-ten square-foot classrooms, but some of those existing classrooms could be different sizes. So it's not that the POR is wrong, it's just that we, those are situations where you gotta work with what you have, so...
All right, so moving on to the favorite part of everybody's meeting. Unless there's any...
I thought, we haven't discussed the rubrics, we skipped over that. So, and it was part of a previous rubric, I forgot to mention it. So I just wanted to mention that I have worked on the ones that we did last time, adding up the rubrics that are suggested by Amy, you, and you, and other members, and I wanted to know if there were any questions about it, and if not, if you were willing to work with those.
I saw the changes, I noted them, I think that they reflected accurately the conversation that we had about the rubric last time, and I'm comfortable moving forward with the rubric as it is.
So I like that, with Jay's idea, like that you could use them for the next meeting to look at what the options are left, what questions do I have? Like, I don't know how to score this one because I don't understand this on this plan, so I think it's awesome.
So, so, yep, that's the homework assignment, board members. I'm not a teacher, so I don't get to give out homework, but just a did. Yeah. The plans that remain, run them through your rubric that we all agree on, and then, you know, any questions or concerns that you have about any of the remaining plans, and then maybe we'd be able to vet those questions or concerns when we bring them back to us.
Now, we're at the favorite part of everybody's meeting. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I have a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, Erin Rios?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Hembling?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Motion passes, board is zero, we are adjourned at two-thirty-three. All right.